Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. What a great night. We've got the windows open. So I'll call the Select Board meeting to order on April 29th at 6:30 PM. We will do our usual public comment first for anything someone wants to say that is not on the agenda, limited to no more than three minutes. Okay, no one's here. So we will move right into our agenda. So come on up now. So this is Mike Sapansky, and I have practiced his name, so I think I've got it right. Sapansky. So welcome, Mike. Mike has applied for one of the open positions on the Capital Investment Planning Committee. There's two open positions. It's a five-member committee, so we need two more. You would be one of those. So we've got your application. So why don't you just tell us why you're interested in doing this? And what you think we would find interesting in your background?
First of all, thank you for having me here and calling me in. Do I need to state my name?
Yeah, go ahead, where you live.
So full name is Gregory Michael Sapansky, but Mike Skey for short. I keep it simple for the town.
So Mike Skey?
Mike Skey.
Okay, all right.
Keep it real simple. And I've been in town for three years. I knew as I got a little bit older, more established in where I was living, I wanted to serve the community. In no better way than do it on a committee and then maybe one day sit with you guys at the board. But the time will tell if I'll rise to those levels. And what I hope to do is really help with some of the town's strategy in the future. And kind of the way the town is heading. I have a daughter that's seven, and I kind of want to help shape and grow the community around so that she has a better, I would say, a better place to live. This is a great place to live, but keep it consistent for what it is.
That's great. So capital's a good stepping stone to get to Select Board. The financial part of the town is really important when you set up here to understand that piece of it. There's a lot more to it, but the financial understanding is really important to doing these jobs. That's great.
Yes.
Jason Illinoiski has sent us an email highly recommending that we appoint Mike, so that box is checked.
So in spite of that, I support him.
Jason is a great chair. He's been involved in a lot of capital projects in this town and does a great job running that committee. So I think you'll enjoy working with him and the other guys on it, too. You've got a golf course person, and then I forget what other guy's background is, but anyway, it's a good committee, so I think you'll like it. I've got to remember that Andrew is sick. He just returned from Roma, and I guess brought something with him from there. So he's here, so don't let me forget to go to him. And there's Mark. And Mark is also sick, so we've got a lot of sickness here tonight. We're not used to having those two sitting up there, so don't let me forget them. Okay, questions for Mike? Marguerite?
Nope, thanks for volunteering.
Al? Sam?
Nope, background looks great and delighted to have you part of this committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew?
Andrew?
Here are the big questions. As you know, Jason's endorsement is good enough for me. Thank you very much for stepping forward for this position.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to have to do roll call vote tonight because Andrew's not here, so don't let me forget that either. All right, so truly thank you for doing this. I'm sure Jason will get you involved right away. We've got a big capital project coming up on May 10th. So my guess is he's listening someplace, so he's going to know we did this tonight. Now, let's vote, then we'll tell you what you have to do from that point on. Okay, so Sam, you want to make the motion?
Sure. I move that we appoint Mike Sapansky to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, term to expire 6/30/25.
Okay, roll call vote. Marguerite?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And Cook is aye, so five-zero. Okay, now, did Jim? Jim's not here. So the next thing you've got to do is be sworn in with the town clerk.
Okay.
And his hours are, what, 8:30 to 5:00 or so? Eight to five.
Downstairs right now.
He's right. If you wanted to go downstairs right now, he could swear you in if you just wanted to get away.
I will go do it right now, then.
All right, that's a good idea. Very efficient. So we're not going to let you get away. So go do it, and then you're officially appointed. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, okay, so next. So Tony, you want to, you, why don't the whole finance team sit down and come on up? Oh, come on up, Carla. So thank you, Tony, for coming. Tony is one of the named partners of our audit firm. You've been doing audit for three years, this third year, I think?
This is the fourth, I believe.
The fourth?
Yep, this is the fourth. Time travels, yeah, fast.
It does, indeed. It's always more than you think it is. So we've got the financial statements. We read, I assume, everything that you told us. We know we've got a clean opinion again, so that's good. So we just want to turn it over to you, and you tell us what you think we should know.
Okay, so everyone has basically, basically I summarized everything in kind of the PowerPoint. You know, if we want to reach back into the financials, let me know, and we can, you know, dig in and see if we need to answer any questions there. But like you said, my name's Tony Roselli. I'm the managing partner for Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates. And it's a pleasure to be here tonight to do a presentation. This is the fourth year that we've audited. And this is for the audit year ended June 30 of '24. So the information right now is nine or 10 months old, just so everyone knows that things change quickly, especially in this environment that we're in now. So that's, this is, like I said, a snapshot of June 30 of '24. And, you know, we can skip by that and we'll go to the contents. So basically, just, and I've done this in every audit. I do the quick introduction. But for the folks at home, people new, you know, kind of describe what an audit is. So the audit in, and I think some of you might be, have an audit background. I think some come from like a big...
I've got a tax background.
You've got a tax background.
Been young for 20 years, but always, always tax.
Yeah, so we're bound by generally accepted auditing standards. That's how we do an audit. Where it's a government, we've got one step further. We've got to do generally accepted government auditing standards, which adds a whole nother layer of things that we need to do as auditors to satisfy ourselves. Because the GAGAS, which is the generally accepted government auditing standard, is called the Yellow Book because back in 1983, when they first put it, it had a yellow cover. So now they call it the Yellow Book, and they don't dare change that color. It's this ugly mustard-yellow book that we have to follow, that they update every three or four years. And in there it says, this is all the CPEs you have to have, here are all the standards you have to follow, here's all the AICPA standards you have to follow. So that's basically how we model our testing of an audit. It basically requires a review of your internal control over the major transactions. Major transactions being revenue, disbursements, payroll, and journal entries. Those are the major things going on in your system. So we have to do internal control over that. Then we have to do risk assessment. So we go through our planning process. Are there any areas that have high risk, low risk? And we focus our audit on where the high-risk items are. For example, we'll spend a lot of time with the treasurer because we feel that cash should be reconciled. It should be reconciled accurately and timely, so that goes high on the list. Receivables goes high on the list. Some things are low on the list. So that's another step that we do. The, if you qualify for a federal audit, which this town is off and on, I believe this year we did a federal audit. If you receive and spend over $750,000, and that cap is going up to a million next year, you're required to have a whole separate set of procedures done, and that's called the federal audit, where the federal government gives us guidelines that we now have to go through for your grant management to see if you're managing your grants the way they should be. And there's a little compliance supplement that we go through. At the end of the process, that whole process, we have to decide, do we have a clean opinion? Or do we have a dirty opinion? The dirty opinion is the qualified opinion. Did you do something wrong? Did something not match? Is there a material error? Happy to report we didn't have any of that in Southborough. We've never had any of that. I don't expect any of that. You've got a great financial team, and it's well-managed all around. Just, everything clicks here. So it's a really, really good audit. I like it. And it's an audit that we go to. We don't say, oh, boy, let's catch our breath, let's, you know? Because certain places, we know we're going to run into walls everywhere, so we've got to, you know, bring all our ammunition and artillery and really hit it. But this place is really very clean, and we gave a clean opinion. And what we're doing today, right now, is SAS 115, which is communicating to you. That's like the final step. The one thing that is a misnomer, just for the public, is it's not a forensic audit. So if someone's, you know, taking a little bit of money down at, you know, Public Works or Clerk's Office or somewhere, a small amount of money, we are not going to catch that unless we're doing a forensic audit. So this is not that, and I just wanted to kind of, you know, make at least the public aware of that because at times, you know, a newspaper article will pop up, oh, so-and-so stole, you know, $380, and we caught him. And it's like, where were the auditors? How come they didn't see that? Well, we don't drill down that far, so I just wanted to kind of make that clear as to what exactly we're doing when we come in and do the audit. Any questions on that? Hopefully that was a nice, like, little summary for everyone, and I didn't put anyone to sleep. So let's move forward. Let's get to the fun stuff. All right, reserve balances. So we'll talk about economic trends first. And you can see on page four that your reserves have steadily gone up. They took a little, you know, a little bit, came down a little bit because you did some spending from your surplus, your free cash. But for the most part, you've kept your reserves right where the agencies like it, the credit agencies. So try to maintain that balance. You're doing a great job. If we go back to '17, you'll see that there was about 3.5 million, and now there's about somewhere around 6, 6 or so million, 6.5 million in reserves. Oh, and I have a typo there.
24.
I forgot, yeah, I forgot. That's, I'll get a material weakness for that, so. But yeah, that's supposed to be 2024, that last.
Fee reduction.
Exactly. Brian should have caught it. Sure.
Could you just characterize what's in the reserve funds as filial? Our formal reserve fund is significantly less than that.
Yeah, no, great, no, great, great question. So in, and the way I define this reserve fund is the way the S&amp;P defines it. So I'm trying to compare apples to apples. It's not the way DOR defines it, and probably not the way you folks describe it. But it's got your stabilization funds, that's one sum. Your second component is your undesignated balance in your general fund, which is the number that is commonly referred to, not quite, but free cash. So when you get your free cash number, that's close to what you're undesignated. The DOR does some of their own machinations of that number, so it's not quite that number, but it's close. And then the third component is what's called assigned fund balance, which is basically the amount that you have encumbered, okay, that you will be spending in the following year. So in economic terms, it's not really a reserve because it's already, you know, basically spoken for in the next year. But for S&amp;P purposes, they add that in as a reserve, so that's why.
So those are funds that have been collected but yet to be expended?
Right, right, right. You earmarked them.
Okay. So you earmarked them.
In an emergency, you could use them for something.
Just spend. Those are actually already, so for example, if the police department had earmarked a vehicle, but they didn't have it by year-end, that would be held over as an encumbrance. That's what.
That's free cash.
That's what that sort of thing is. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So yeah, so the number is not, so in your finance meetings, when you're having conversations, it's a different number than what's on here.
Okay.
Now, the reserve trends, Southborough is, you know, close to 10%. You're in that second tier. And you've got the new S&amp;P model. What are they giving you for reserves now? You don't have that part? So they used to give you 10% for reserves was the amount that would count towards your bond rating. There is a new model that came out that we're going to talk about a little later when we go through debt. But Southborough is in tier two. So tier one used to be 15%, higher than 15%. And the way we do the ratio is we take that reserve number that we had on that prior slide and divide it by your expenditures. So reserves divided by your general fund expenditures. If it's above 15%, you go tier one. If you're eight to, actually, if you go eight to 15%, you're tier two, and that's where Southborough ends up. The good part about that is you do have a AAA, so you don't need, Southborough scores so high in other categories that you don't need that 15% to pull the boat. Some towns do need that 15% to score high in that, in the reserve category. But you've had this reserve ratio, it's been about the same since I've been doing the audit, and you've always had the AAA. So you're doing what you need to do. So let's go to the next page, which is the economic trends, kind of summarizing what I've just talked about. Your reserves decreased from 23 to 24, from 10.8 to 9.4. The, there was a planned use of free cash of 2.4 million. That was the biggest hit and why it went down. You made that back by having some local receipts of 1.7, and you had expenditures of 1, but there was some other, probably some other journal entries and things like that that caused that difference. So it seems like the town's goal is to, is to spend free cash and then make it back through good budget management and through conservatively forecasting your revenues. So you'll spend the 2 million, but then you get it back because your reserves have, you know, steadily climbed, and you've done a good job, you know, with that process. Any questions on those two bullets? The ratio is approximate to the state average. You're in the tier-two bracket, and you've got a AAA rating, so that's all, that's all good.
And it's my understanding that we're never going to get to the top with Moody's because of the way that's structured.
Moody's, the Moody's metrics are not structured to small towns.
Right.
So Cambridge, Brookline, Boston, you know, they're really big towns, Newton. Because you've got to have, one of their leading metrics is the equalized valuation. And your equalized valuation is never going to get to, you know, what Moody's has.
But if we were to get to the top of the list at Moody's, I don't, my understanding, that wouldn't really have a significant impact on our interest borrowing cost.
No, not at all. It's more of a.
Good enough.
It's more of an accreditation, you know, so to speak. It would not impact your borrowing costs, really, that much if any.
Good.
So I kind of, the last time you were probably bond rated, I know they've changed this, but the last time you got your bond rating, this is what, this is how they did this. We've gone over this in the past. There's a certain percentage for the economy, which is basically your equalized valuation. You're getting, you know, 30% for that. Management score's 20%. Budget flexibility, 10%. Budget performance, 10%. Liquidity, 10%, and debt, 10%. From what I understand, debt's gone up to 20, so something else on here's changed. But you scored, when I did your average here, you scored a 1.5, and that gets you, that sneaks you into that AAA category.
What's the range for the AAA?
The range, so AAA is a 1, but if you're 1.6 or under, they look, you know, then you're in that box where they say, because some 1.5, 1.6's don't get the AAA, some do. So they look at other things. They might give more weight to demographics, a little bit more weight to, you know, how well it's managed. Have we seen a lot of problems with the audits? Have we seen a lot of problems with management? So you, when you got the 1.5, your other things kind of said, yeah, Southborough's a AAA.
Weren't we 1.5 last year, too, I think?
You've been right around that 1.5. I think you were 1.6 maybe one year, but you've been right around that 1.5.
In January of '25 was our last bond rating evaluation, correct?
Yes. And you got the AAA, right?
Yes.
So, yeah.
Yes.
And so that's good for a year, presumably, unless something crazy happens.
That's good until your next, yeah, until your next, now, I don't know what's going to happen. I mean, a lot of things are going on, as we're all aware, so I don't know what's going to happen. Debt, you know, the bond markets went crazy back three weeks ago. They were, they were going up two or three tenths overnight. And, you know, I talked to the bankers, and I'm like, what's going on with municipal debt? Is anything happening? And they're like, we're not even doing it right now. It's just, you know, we try to give a quote, the next day it's something else, the next day it's something else. It's starting to settle down a little bit, so hopefully it does settle. But now there's this, there's this new removing the tax-exempt status. You've heard about that, right, Brian? Of the debt, which is going to increase your interest rate to help make up for the reduction in taxes. Hopefully, this is something that's on the table to fill some of those gaps. So that could, that could cost the towns a little bit. In speaking to the bankers, they think there's better than a 50% chance of that happening, that it's, that the bonds are going to go, are not going to be tax-exempt. So they're going to be adding probably a percent, a percent and a half to your bond cost, so that's something to keep in mind going forward. So we talked about bond, we've talked about all of this, Brian, so we could go to OPEB, which is on the next page. And from what I understand, Linda's going to give you a really nice presentation, but I've got some bullets here. So GASB 74 and GASB 75, that's the government auditing, government accounting standard that we use to calculate OPEB. But thank God we get help from an actuary, so we do get a report. They calculate the liability for the town. We use the numbers in that report. The latest one you received showed an OPEB liability. And for those who don't know what OPEB is, that may be listening at home, OPEB is other post-employment benefits. So for the most part, it's health insurance that you are contributing towards a retiree. So someone works for the town for 20 years, and they retire, and they qualify for health benefits. The town has to pay a piece of that. So the GASB is saying you are accruing that liability as they work for you. That liability just doesn't happen the day they retire. It's actually accruing, so you have to recognize this liability. And that's basically what that means. It's what you need to pay. So if everything ended today and everyone retired, you would need 38.7 million in that fund to fund health insurance every year for your retirees. And it's 3.5 million less than the prior year, which is good news, so it has been going down. You had a really good investment result. Investment income was 395K versus 221 the prior year. Your discount rate went up to 6.48 from 5.6, and there's 3.7 million in the fund. Average age of employees is 48. So that number, that number's going to go up. The average age of your retirees is going to go up. People are living longer, which is good for the white-haired guys in the group, you know? So I'm happy with that. But when we look at our, you know, back when I was a little kid, trying to figure out, hey, you know, you see this little social security things, hey, this says I'm only going to live 74 years, you know? That number is now into the 80s, you know, so it's going up fast. And in the next 15 or 20 years, we might even see 90s with the advance of medicine. So that liability is real, and you are, you're responsible for that as a town until that person passes. So someone who retires at the age of 62 or 3 and lives to be 95, that's 33 years. So it's a very significant amount. And as that population, that bucket gets bigger, it's going to make this number get bigger as you get close to it. So right now, you are, like I said, 3.7 million. You're in really, you're in good shape. You're not like the pension or some of the other liabilities out there that have been funding for years. This basically just started, and you're basically at, you know, a little bit above average from where I see the other towns are. You've got more of a head start. And from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, when your pension liability is fully funded, probably, what is it, 2030?
2040, it has to be.
42?
Is it 40?
I'm sorry, 30.
It's, it's.
30 something.
Legally, you have to be funded by 40, but I think Worcester's 34 or something. So they're much sooner. So in about 10 years, when your pension is fully funded, there's going to be a little windfall there because you don't have to make that big payment. What a lot of towns are doing are adopting policies now, not when it happens, to take a portion of that windfall and more aggressively fund the OPEB.
When it happens. When it happens.
When it happens, yes.
When it happens, right. So.
Get to the end of the.
Yeah, the problem you're running into, if you, you have to put that philosophy out here now, start to, start to build it, that this is what we're going to do. This is the plan. This is our long-term goal, if it is. And I'm just saying this is what a lot of towns are doing. Because I had one town go 100% on their pension already, and it created 6 million bucks. And the police wanted some, the public works wanted some, the school wanted some. So it was like, no, well, no, we want to fund our OPEB, and it turned into a real problem. So I think it's a good idea to start establishing those strategies now.
The police fire, whatever, wanted some of that in their salaries, in their next contract?
Contract, yeah, exactly. Contracts. School wanted a piece of it. So it was really, it was like, wow, we have this 5 million that we were planning on putting into OPEB, and now everyone's, you know, wants a piece of this windfall because they were fortunate enough to hit 100% pretty quick.
There's the thought that the taxpayers should get it back.
So those that have decided to implement that policy to direct the surplus created by the fully funded pension over to OPEB, right? How are they doing that? What mechanism are they doing to adopt that policy?
They're just hot-coding it in their, in their policies that, so.
So it's like a select board policy to do it?
Yeah, like, like an OPEB policy. So in your OPEB policy, we're currently doing X number of dollars per year. We keep the money in a managed investment account. When the pension is fully funded, we will take a portion of that, and you guys can figure out what makes sense. We'll take a portion of that and put it into OPEB. So what the towns are doing are having their actuaries, and Linda can talk to this better than I can when she's out next week or in a couple of weeks. They're having their actuaries kind of schedule it out to see, okay, and you're fortunate enough that you're Worcester County, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Linda also does, she's the actuary for Worcester. Yeah. Linda also does, she's the actuary for Worcester County, so she does both. So you're fortunate enough for her to tell you that, hey, ten years from now, this is what's going to be available. And this is what your OPEB's going to be ten years from now. You know, she can do that sort of study. And this is a strategy you may want to adopt, you know?
We, we could actually do that, but a subsequent board could come along and change that policy.
Well, that's what I was trying to find out. Do you, is it a bylaw? Is it a policy? A policy, of course, is easy to change. Bylaws aren't so easy to change.
But I think if we did make it a policy, it's good to create the structure there and some momentum to do it that way. And somebody would have to make the argument to change it later if they decided to.
Right. If the philosophy is in place, and you, and it's talked about enough, it lessens the blow when, when you get there.
Okay, all right.
All right. The pension liability update. So, so Worcester County, and, and Worcester County's funding ratio went down. It's fifty point four. And the reason it went down is because this was a valuation done as of the end of, as of the end of twenty-three. So the market was kind of in flux. I think when you get your twenty-four valuation, it might be a little bit better, because it was a pretty good investment year in fiscal twenty-four, calendar twenty-four, because pension is done on a calendar basis, not a fiscal basis. So you're down at fifty point four percent. Most of the funds in the state are at seventy to ninety percent. Some are at a hundred, so.
Worcester is at the bottom of that.
So, so you're way behind. Yeah, you're way behind.
Unfortunately, unfortunately.
Why, why is that? They just don't have a good board?
Because they haven't managed it as successfully as other pensions.
Right. It has, it, they've done better in recent years, but probably ten years ago. And, and if there's any investment people here, you all understand how compounding works.
Sure, yeah.
If you miss those first couple of years of compounding, it's going to cost you.
Get it back.
It's going to cost you a ton at the end. So.
Those boards tend to be political appointees, unfortunately. And so you don't have people who are loaded with, you know, professional investment managers.
Yeah. So what happens is, you take a place like Southborough, which, Southborough's pretty, pretty affluent. You have some wealth. It's a good community. But now you're mixed in with communities that aren't as affluent. So when Worcester comes up with its assessment, when Linda says you can do this, she'll give three choices. You can do A, B, or C for your assessment. They're not going to pick the one that works for Wellesley and, you know, Southborough and Newton. They're not going to pick that one, because it's going to hurt the Athols, the Winchendons. It's going to hurt, hurt those folks.
All of the participants.
So you, you end up getting punished, because you, you're not able to pick up this funded liability as quickly. As Wellesley has its own pension system, they're a hundred percent funded, you know, because they can manage it, they can assess what they want. They don't have to worry about, you know, other communities in there. And, and that's where it's hurt you. So you're at, you know, and Wilmington ran into this problem. Wilmington has more free cash than anybody in the state of Massachusetts, but they're in the Middlesex County pension. So what Wilmington does is they put, every year, they put money into a stabilization fund. Actually, no. In Worcester, you have to do stabilization. Wilmington actually contributes more than they're required to, and they get credit for it. Middlesex allows that, Worcester doesn't. So even if you wanted to put more in, it doesn't get credited to you folks. It gets, it goes across the, the full spectrum of towns. So that kind of handcuffs you a little bit. Whereas Wilmington said, let's take this into our own hands. Middlesex is actually allowing us to put more in if we want. Even though they're assessing as low, we, we have extra money. So they, a couple of times, they put five million extra dollars in, and it's really impacted their liability. And what's going to end up happening here is that pension number's going to be a big number, that assessment, to get fully caught up. Or they're going to stretch it out to two thousand forty, which, again, just kicking the, the can down the road. So, and two forty is the statutory cap.
Well, we, we actually have a special act in the pipeline to issue pension obligation bonds, that we don't necessarily want to do, but it's good to have that on the shelf if interest rates are totally crazy. And Arlington, I think, did that. I think Wellesley did like a sixty million dollars worth.
Yeah, Andover just did it.
Yeah.
They just did it?
They did it just before the rates skyrocketed. So like, in the last two years.
Yep. There was a time a couple of years ago when it was pretty attractive.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah. Andover hit a home run, because I think they, the pension bonds they got were like two point two percent.
Wow.
Like insane, because the rates were so low with the pandemic and everything. And Brockton did the same thing. I think Springfield might have done the same thing. They did about seven hundred million. And the beauty of that is, yeah, they were, they're able, what they could do now, because the debt service is less than the assessment.
Right.
One town, which couldn't get it through, they wanted to take the delta and put that into OPEB. So they wanted to do pension obligation bonds. There was a delta.
Yep.
Take that difference and start funding OPEB. So they're killing, killing two birds with one stone. But what happened was the rates ran away. So this was probably around March of two thousand and twenty-two, the rates, you know.
Great concept.
The crime war started. FOMC started raising rates, and they ran away. Now, now it's pretty difficult.
I don't see how you could do it now. How could anyone?
Right, right now you couldn't.
Any idea of what interest rates are going to do?
Yeah. Right now you couldn't do it.
You can't do it. On the other hand, if something happens, and we have that capability, if interest rates do wind up going way down for some.
If you've got, if there's a, if there's a black swan event.
We can move.
Yeah. There's a black swan event that can, that drops those rates, which nobody could have predicted. Nobody could have predicted the pandemic.
But we, we could be ready.
You could be ready, so you don't have to go through the legislative process, which is like a one-year process.
At best.
So. Fuel for thought. Okay, we had some informational items that we reported. SaaS one fifteen, we already discussed. Network security, just, you know, stay on top of that. I, I know you guys are doing a good job with that, but the bad guys try to stay one step ahead. The good guys are trying to catch up to the different things that are happening. And about once a month, I see one of my clients up there on the Fox News or something, where they, they got to close the school down for a couple of days, because they can't operate. And so just, just stay on top of the network security. The, the biggest thing, which I believe you have, is the, the phishing, where you, you try to trick your employees.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Cybert's got phished last week.
And, and the ones that fail get a picture of them, put on the, on the wall. That's what I have to do at my house, put a picture of my wife on the wall every time she fails. She comes running in. Tony, Tony, I just got, I just got a, a text from the Bank of America. They're going to take all our money. What are we going to do? I'm like, don't click that. Did you click that? Don't click that. But it, it, it's, it's, it's crazy. And to me, I know when it's, I just know, I don't click on it. It's just stupid. You know, if someone wants to get to me, call me. But some people, just, they don't know. They have to click on it. They think something's going to happen. And, and they disguise it very well now.
They do.
I have, sometimes I have to forward it to my IT. And I'll say, is this, is this a cool email or not? Because I don't want to touch it if it is, if it isn't. And so it's always good to just be aware of that. Train your employees, make your employees very aware of the problems that could happen. Fraud risk, I mean, you know, Carla does a great job, you know, reconciling with the other departments on cash receipts and, and doing the, the monthly look at that, looking at the analytics, you know, is, is this revenue lower, you know, this, this year than last, you know, what happened there? Does a great job with that. Sometimes that fraud is looking at you right in the face. You're, you know, if you've got a, like a transfer station, and it was two hundred thousand one year, and now it's one fifty. It's, it's there. And it's like, you know, how does that happen? You know, and, you know, it's, it's, it's in the numbers sometimes. And so, so having those controls in place can help detect that stuff. Your, your long-term obligations, we talked about, which is pension and OPEB. And great news, Brian, good job, investment income, double the prior year, so six hundred K. And municipal investing is, is a little, not as easy as if you're a corporation, because this, Massachusetts has rules. You've got the, the list that you can only invest in. General fund is very strict on what you can invest in. So, so it, it's nice. One of the good things, one of the bad things about the FOMC raising rates is obviously the debt, the increase in the debt. But it did increase the, the net, the amount you could earn in investment income. So it's good to see towns take advantage of that. And then observations. So we had a, we had a handful of observations in the prior year. Those are all resolved. I think there was something with the assessor that is now, what, like an annual, like, release of funds?
Yes.
I think there was a couple of other small things. Those are all resolved. We've kind of talked about this. Just pay attention to the macro climate. Bond market's very volatile. Stock market is volatile. Stock market, you know, hopefully it's stabilizing now, but who knows? Supply chain issues, if the tariffs really grab hold, is it, what kind of supply chain issues is this going to create? Here's the one that is a doozy, the federal grants. When, when Elon got into the, the Doge with the new administration, and they started questioning the grants, you know, looking at them and saying, why do towns need these grants? Why do municipalities, why do states need these grants? And they're looking at them one by one. And we had a, a big meeting a couple of weeks ago with all the CPAs and some of the people from the state, saying, hey, what's going to happen? Are there not going to be any, it seems like the goal is no more grants. Go, go do your own thing. I don't think that's going to happen. And the problem is, if you try to call someone, they got laid off. So, you know, the main guy that we talked to, I, I, I said, so what are you hearing? He's, he's the one that calls Washington. He goes, everyone I talked to is laid off. He goes, I don't even know what's happening. So, so the federal grants, keep an eye on that. I don't know. I think you rely on your federal grants for a specific purpose. You know, it's not like it's funding. In other states, they use it to help with their budgets and whatnot. That's not the case here. The offer was all done for specific items outside of the budget. And all the federal grants you get are done for specific items. So those things, if they got, if they got cut, you'd have to cut those, those services, but they wouldn't affect the general fund. So, so in Massachusetts, I don't think it's going to be as big of an issue if it happens. I don't think it will. I hope, I'm hoping. You know, other things, just recessionary fears, stagflation, you know, the typical stuff. Just keep an eye on it when you're going through your meetings and, and your strategy. And I think that's, that's it for the presentation. Any?
And is it?
Yep. Any questions, concerns?
So thank you for coming in person. Appreciate it. We just wanted to get you involved in this debt discussion we're about to have too. So having you here in person was.
Okay.
Would be helpful. But I can speak, because I am an accountant. I think this team is great. I'm glad you say what you did. I truly enjoy working with both of them. I've worked with them both for a long time, and feel highly confident in what they do and the information they give us. So I do agree with you. It's a good team, and we've got a very good situation in this town as far as our financial team, for sure. So Brian, Carla, I want you to know that. Um, Marguerite, anything you want to ask Tony?
No questions, but I look forward to the next part of the discussion.
Okay. Al?
Yeah, so one quick question. One quick question. So we have, I'm looking at the balance sheet, and, you know, that we have basically a hundred million dollars in long-term liabilities. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but we classify the vast majority of that as either unfunded pension liabilities and/or our OPEB obligations. Is that correct?
Yeah, if you go to, if you go to, somewhere, page, page thirty-six tells you exactly what's in that number.
Okay.
So it's general obligation bonds of twenty-six million, compensated absences, six hundred thousand, net pension liability is thirty-one point seven, net other post-employment benefits is ninety-eight point two. So it's, yeah, if you go to page thirty-six of the financials.
Okay.
It will describe exactly what's in the, the long-term liabilities. Thank you.
Sam?
I don't have any questions. I do have a comment. I'm, I'm not an accountant, but as one who has suffered through audits for several decades, I want to say, I'm impressed with the fact that we have a clean audit here. Clean audits, in my experience, are pretty rare. Auditors always seem to be able to come up with a list of what I, sometimes as a client, view as nitpicky kind of things. But they're probably right, things that we should be addressing. And for me at least, it's pretty unusual to have this kind of record here. So kudos to Brian, Carla, Mark, the finance team, to get all the i's dotted and t's crossed in this process. There are a lot of moving parts. It's a non, never-ending job. Things can break loose from all sorts of crazy angles. And I think the fact that we do that consistently here is pretty impressive. So again, thanks to you guys for the hard work, and let's keep it going. Thank you.
Yeah, when we, when we talk about something during the year, you know, something unusual will come up. Carla's not shy. She'll email me or call me. It's, it's, you know, in, say she's done it incorrectly. It's fixed. By the time we come and do the audit, she's, she's tripped up trying to fix it so fast. I'm like, oh, golly, shouldn't have done it that way. Do this. Something like that, I'm not going to put in the management letter. It's, it's a small item. It's, to me, it's an educational process. You know, if, if Brian's not reconciling cash, that's a problem. That's going to be a material weakness in the, in the management letter, in the, in the report. And, and the cash balance is perfect here. It balances. It's, it's a joy. We always have. In other towns, I'd say half. I won't say they're all like that, but in at least half, they got those other. I'm like, what's the other? What does other mean? What does other one point two million mean?
I don't know where it is.
And then they take out a list that's seven thousand rows long. I, I go, does that actually say two thousand and three at the top of that list? You've been carrying, you know, these are new towns that I go, you've been accumulating this list for, wouldn't you think you should adjust, adjust something?
And, and plus, you're reading the news, all sorts of crazy things that happen in terms of town finances, that we seem to have escaped, for the most part at least, historically. So again, never-ending challenge and struggle, but again, we seem to do a very capable job, and thanks to the hard work and skill of the team here, so.
Andrew?
Yes. Hi, Tony. So thanks. You know, this report sounds very similar to the prior reports we've heard, which is, I think, good news. I echo the positive things that Kathy and Sam and others have said. Just one question for you. It's a point I remember you mentioning before, is about the importance in terms of good, you know, financial management of closing out old articles and looking for ways where there's kind of loose change hanging around.
Yep.
Repurposing it. I don't know if in your latest audit, you looked at that, or do you have a view on how we're, how we're doing on that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we did that the first year, and generally, we do that the very first year. We go in and say, hey, this hasn't been looked at in five years. Do you need it? Can you use it? And Carla cleaned up, Carla cleaned all that up. That, that, you know, that, that was, that's a long process of sitting down with department heads, and you got these old gift accounts that you got in like nineteen ninety-two that just never got used. And, and I think the department heads would probably be pretty appreciative of the fact that there was some money there that they, they were not privy to. And I haven't seen that in the more recent audits. There's always one or two small things, but I have not seen that, that large amount of, of stagnant balance, as we call.
She makes sure before every annual town meeting, she goes in as part of her procedure and goes through them. So you shouldn't see a big thing, because she does it every single year.
Repurpose. If you have any debt proceeds left over, you repurpose that. And that's how it should be. I mean, some of these, some of the cities have millions, millions that they've accumulated, because they're much bigger than the town of Southborough. But it's, it's just a huge task just to go through, once you've let it accumulate. So I think what you're doing on an ongoing basis will, will, will be, will satisfy that.
Okay. Well, thanks. It sounds like it wasn't really mentioned, because it's already under control. Thank you, Carla, for staying on top of that.
This guy looks like a young Monty Hall.
And so one final comment. Remember auditors, Tony. The reason I wasn't an auditor is because, you know, taxpayers are liked, right? They're liked better than the auditors. But, you know, there's a lot of work to do in an audit. They've got to do a lot of things. They've got to, you know, pull a lot of information for you. They do a lot of schedules for you. So again, kudos to the team to do things and do it willingly with a smile on their face, like I know they do. So again, kudos to the team to do things and do it willingly with a smile on their face like I know they do.
Most of my clients like me, but some of them don't. Unfortunately, if it's not good news, I do have to deliver it, so.
So we've got a hand up in our public to ask a question. So Shelley? Can you hear us? Shelley? So Shelley, we can't hear you.
Oh, her.
So we're going to give you a couple more seconds?
The microphone's off, so she...
Yeah, so microphone's off, so you may have to reboot to get back on, but we can't hear you at all if you're talking or see you. And so we're going to keep going. If you want to try to come back in, you can, but we can't hear anything.
Oh, connecting to audio.
All right, we're going to keep going. Okay, Shelley, you can try again if you, you can. Okay. Shelley?
Sometimes they have their volume down and you don't figure it out till... Check your volume.
Okay, we can't hear you, so we're going to keep going. You may want to just go out completely, shut it down and come back in. Okay, so we asked Tony here for a couple, we'd like to see him. But we also are going to talk about a, our debt policy. You may recall that when the DOR came in a year ago, that they did two things. One was to make a recommendation of a set of financial policies. One of those includes debt. When we last discussed this, I think there were eighteen on there that we need to consider. I think we passed or approved seven. But the big one is debt. So we've got, so Tony, you may not know this, but we've got a big project that's going to be voted on on May tenth for a new school. Hundred nine million dollar school. We, we're going to get thirty-five million dollars from the MSBA. The bond is expected to be sixty-eight point two million dollars, assuming we get a federal grant for our HVAC system, our geothermal, and from the state. So it's a big number for us. We've never had debt like this. So we have spent, I mean, I'm looking over, so Andrew's head of the advisory committee.
Yep.
So he and I are both on the NERE building committee that was formed about three years ago to basically do the work to bring the project forward. So we're here. And of course, the debt is a big thing. There's a lot of people that oppose this project because of the cost. So we've been working very hard to show what the impact the town is. So Andrew's going to talk about that in a few minutes too. But at the same time, Mr. Hamilton wanted us to bring forward the, the debt discussion before May tenth to make sure that everybody's aware of what the debt picture of the town would look like if this project is passed on May tenth. So that's where we are tonight. So Andrew, you want to come on up and join us? So Brian, you stay there too. You guys stay there.
I would have wore shorts if I knew how.
Good night for it. All right, so Andrew, you want to just describe where we are at this point, you and Brian?
Is it excluded?
Yes.
It's excluded.
Yes, it's, well, it's got to be, we're going to vote to, for it to be excluded.
Going to vote to exclude it. So that's, that's big. And it's a hundred and nine million is the project and what percent are you getting?
Thirty, thirty-two point five is what we're going to get from the state. So the, the grant is thirty-five million. The net to the town should be sixty-eight, as long as we get about five million dollars of money from the federal government, from the Inflation Reduction Act, and then from Massachusetts for the geothermal system that we want to use.
Correct. So you want to pull up the, can you, do I move me over? Okay. I used to have all these other Zoom screens on my screen at the same time. So this is, so the policy group met the other day, or at least ones that were available. So we went together through this policy statement, the, the, you know, the real kind of guts of it is this policy summary here. Let's hide the taskbar here and make it bigger. Anyway, so...
You can use your magnet at the bottom, right-hand corner. If you can increase the size.
I just got to hide this one.
Yeah, just hide it and then move that over. Yeah.
Okay, so I can create it. So, you know, looking at a few other towns' debt policies, you know, kind of looking at what the DLS had proposed to us and looking at the new S and P model and what they look at from a debt and liabilities perspective. So now they call it debt and liabilities. It used to be ten percent, now it's a twenty percent valuation. We kind of reevaluated the, the criteria. So a lot of towns will do, you know, basically debt as a percentage of expenditure, some will do revenue. I thought, you know, percentage of general fund revenue made more sense. I think people can get their head around that. It's basically debt to income, as people are familiar with their mortgage process. It excludes debt exclusion, self-supporting debt. Self-supporting debt is our CPA funds, our water enterprise fund, et cetera, ones where the revenue goes directly to the debt. The next one is gross debt service. So it's inclusive of our debt exclusions, our overlapping debt, self-supporting debt, so kind of like an all-in over total governmental fund revenue, which is what the S and P uses, which kind of captures that CPA revenue, water revenue. So it's kind of an all-inclusive revenue figure for the town. So it's kind of a, the first one's kind of a, just the general fund with the debt exclusions and stuff taken out. The other one is like everything without the revenue. So as you can kind of get, it's, it's similar, apples to apples. The next is state law, that we can't go over the five percent equalized value without approval and there's other things you can do there. But it also excludes MSBA projects from that calculation. With, add with a goal of being under two and a half percent, which we are well under today. And, and, you know, I think we, you know, could certainly stay at that point. I think it's roughly a hundred and twenty million dollars of total debt right now is our, is our two and a half percent there. So I think we're...
You're still under that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think we're, we're, right now, we're, what, thirty? So we, we got a lot of room there just to get to the two and a half and the five.
Is a three point eight billion dollars, right? So five percent of that is a hundred and ninety million, right? So that's our five percent that you're, you're...
Correct.
Okay, all right, keep going.
And the next two are basically directly out of the S and P calculation. So net direct outstanding debt per capita under forty-five hundred. Right now, we are just on the, so that's the next level of the calculation. So right now, we are at, I think, a level, number four? Yeah, number four in there. So that goes one through six, one being the best, six being the worst. Right now, we are four. We're between that twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred. And we're kind of just on the cusp of the thirty-five hundred on net pension lib, or on debt outstanding. So I kind of moved it over to the five, that, that forty-five hundred hurdle.
And Andrew, the policies for other towns you looked at, do they include those two?
I don't, I haven't seen one, but again, they just rolled this out, this new S and P model in September.
Yeah, this is new. So a lot of towns have not adjusted yet for this, for this policy.
Would you think this would...
Uh, yes, so you're...
Is it direction at least?
Well, you, you're moving into, so one is, one is the best, right?
Correct.
And six is...
The worst.
The worst. And this debt gets you into...
This would get us into a five instead of a three. Correct. The per capita hurts us, although S and P does have the ability...
Because of your population, right?
They do have the ability to upgrade you based upon your demographics if your population is too burdensome. Like if you have too many seasonal homes, right? Your population isn't high, but you have a lot of properties, right?
Yeah, they can make analytical adjustments.
Exactly, exactly. So, you know, and, and out of the, the S and P analysis done this January, our worst score of three was our debt and liabilities. And it was only for these two per capita scores.
See, I, Tony, I have trouble with these two intellectually. And I, Andrew and I have talked about this. I just can't get my arms around why the number of people in a town, because, you know, what if you've got a town that's a ton of children, same in number of people, then you've got a town that's full of old people? Two really different towns, right? Yet you still do the same computation. I get the five percent. I get the, I'm trying to keep your, your debt service to a percent of your revenue. I'm having trouble with those last two as far as why they're important.
Yeah, so Nantucket has...
Oh, sure.
Ten thousand people year round.
Yeah.
So when S and P does the calculation, it's off the charts. And I'm like, whoa, 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 whoa. You've got thirty-six billionaires that live on Nantucket. I said, you have to factor that in. They could pay the entire operating budget of the town with one check. I said, so, so I convinced them to, to do the analytics on that, that, you know, I think it's the third richest county in the entire country. So, so the number that, it just blew it out, you know, blew out the debt ratios and all that. And they ended up saying, yeah, you're right, let's, let's, let's bring that back. And then you've got a town like Bridgewater, where you've got, you've got the prison, you've got the, you've got the students. There's a whole, and they, and these places have their own policing and all that, but it's screwing with their calculations. So you have to, you have to make an analytical adjustment there on the population. And for years, Marlboro was, they finally got their triple A, but they were getting, they were getting hit. But they didn't realize how many people come into Marlboro on a daily basis to work. I mean, it's, it's enormous, the amount of people that are in Marlboro from nine to five. So, so they have to make these analytical adjustments. And so they, in the end, they don't, like you're saying, it just doesn't make sense sometimes. And the S and P people that are looking at it, hopefully, they see what you see, that, hey, this doesn't make sense. You know, the demographics don't make sense, those ratios don't make sense, and they make those sorts of adjustments.
So the new model they're using right now, they use that in January? So this was part of that in January too?
Correct.
Okay. So Tony, would you get too excited about those last two, that we were four or five versus as long as we're in great shape as far as our amount of debt compared to our value and our debt service ratio?
You know...
So that's the breakout, they do breakout. So it's, it used to be ten percent for debt and liabilities, now it's twenty percent.
Let's take a look.
Twenty percent economy, twenty percent financial performance, twenty percent reserves and liquidity, and twenty percent management. So the debt and liabilities is twenty percent and half of that is the first characteristic, the, the debt service to revenues. And then the other half is those, the other two metrics is twenty-five percent for each of those, so.
Okay, so ten, so half of it is the first two or the first one?
First one.
First one, okay.
That's fifty percent. The other two are twenty-fives.
And, and the debt in places that have triple As is, I mean, they're all building schools. Giant schools. One hundred and nine is nothing. I think Newton is doing seven hundred million or something.
Two billion dollar high schools in the pipeline.
Yeah, exactly. So one oh nine is nothing. So in terms of, and, so, so let me ask you this, because I haven't dug into this. But are there any positive enhances?
So there's, there's a few positive enhances for debt and liabilities.
That help you, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And one of them is like an eighty percent of it within ten years, so if you front-load your principal.
If you front-load, you get credit for that, yeah.
A lot of towns get a half a point for that, which helps. And there's a bunch of, and, you know, for us, we, we get an extra whole, extra point. That's why we go from a one point five to a one, a triple A, because our equalized va, our, our per capita income is over a certain threshold. So that's just an automatic one extra point upgrade.
And, and do they have, like, if you, if your pension assessment is less than a certain percentage of your expenditures, do you get an enhancer, enhancer for that? Or you don't get punished for it? I think that's what it used to be. Yeah, debt, debt is tricky. It, it, it's tr, it's complicated. It's not as easy as we're doing the ten percent thing we did earlier. You just divide this by this, it's all different, like, things coming in on debt. But you've already been graded under this model.
Correct, and we still kept our triple A.
And you kept your triple A. And did they know, Brian, that you were planning this school? Because you have to tell them about projects.
Yeah, it's in the report.
Yeah, so you told them you were planning the school?
Yes.
Yeah, and actually, what they have in there is the original number that was higher than what...
So your debt profile was...
Yes, it's up at the beginning, you'll see here.
Where is it? You're debt right there.
See it? Oh, yeah, eighty-one million to construct an elementary school. So that was before we brought the cost down a little bit.
A lot.
But they obviously don't take it into consideration because it hap, doesn't happen, but they, you know, kind of warn against that and OPEB as our two kind of...
Can you email that to me at some point so I can look at it?
Hey, Brian.
Yeah, and I'll take a look at it. I might not be able to answer everything tonight, but I'll certainly be able to look at.
So Tony, we use a bond consultant who's been, he's, he's, he's very experienced, working with Brian for a long time. So Brian and I worked with him to model the debt on the new school, what it would look like, amortization, et cetera. And he said, well, he believes the worst case this debt might do to Southborough is lower the triple A to double A, one, one notch down. And he said he thinks it's ten basis points as far as the interest rate goes.
Yeah.
So that's what his analysis was as far as what this debt...
Yeah, you are not going below a double A plus.
Yeah.
That will never happen. So the difference between a double A plus and a triple A is...
Yeah, and that's what Algonquin is.
Yeah. Yeah, triple A is, it's more of a, we got a triple A, you know, so you're at meetings and we have a triple A. But the difference between the double A plus and the triple A is miniscule. And, and it all, it all comes down to your investors. So when you do, you do a prospectus, you do a bond prospectus, it's an SEC document, it gets floated and people bid on it. And I've seen double A plus communities get better grades than triple A because investors liked that community better. And are basically saying, well, we think S and P got it wrong because we're, we like this community better than this particular one that had a triple A. So that's the worst thing that's going to happen. I would think, did they, when you told them about this big project, were they even phased?
No.
No, right? Because this is normal. This is normal.
Yeah, they...
This is a normal process in, in, in a town, is, is to build a building like this.
They were more interested if it was excluded, you know, that...
If it's excluded, is it, is very important. And so it may hit the ratios a little bit, but I think you're so strong in the other areas. Now, if for some reason, you know, we talked about that tier two on the, on the ratios, say that slipped, okay? And this slips. Now, now you're, you know, now you're on, in, in an area where you may go to the double A plus.
So that middle section, which to me is what Andrew said, the guts of the policy, the rest of it just kind of flushes some of the details out. Tony, do you have any issue with what we're going to talk about as far as whether this is where we want to go with this? So we're going to try to maybe agree tonight that that is going to be the goal for our town is, is those ratios.
So email me that policy.
Yep.
And email me that document and, and I'll...
I'll send you the, the new methodology.
I'll do a little homework on it and then I'll let Brian know.
That would be very...
And I'll do that pretty quickly.
That would be great, that would be great.
When, when is the, have you already got, you haven't gone to the ballot yet?
No, so May tenth is the actual town meeting vote, where we need two thirds, and then May thirteenth is the ballot vote.
Okay, so it's coming up fast, okay.
Oh, yeah, very fast.
So, yeah, send that stuff to me. And who, who's your bond advisor?
David Eisenbaum, UniBank.
Over at UniBank?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, no, I can take a look at it. I'm not seeing a big problem right now in terms of what I see out there versus what you, you folks are doing. I'm not seeing a big problem, but let me, let me take a look. You're also in a very, very nice area of the state. All the surrounding communities are triple A, a lot of them. And it's, it's, it's a good spot. They, they like this area. You go out by Athol, Winchendon, Phillipston, they have a tough time getting out of the A category, you know, on their debt, just because the bond raters don't like that area of the state. So geography's pretty important, that's what in...
That's the first category. That's the first category.
The, um, what is it called? MSA, if you're in a
Correct.
metropolitan statistical area, you, you got proximity to Boston and Worcester, you know, so you've got two MSAs, uh, working for you. Do a lot of, uh, do a lot of employees in this town, uh, travel to Boston? Like, is there a rail?
Yes, you mean a rail, yeah.
So you got the commuter rail, which is important. So these are the things they look at, you know. Once they've done their score, they look at all the other, other things that are going on. And, uh, you know, how's growth in town? Is that pretty robust, or is that stagnant?
Very steady, very slow, it's, it's not growing much. Our commercial base is not big, it keeps declining relative to the residents. We're trying to do something about that, but that's not easy to do. So we'd like to see that increase, that ratio. But the debt right now we've got is low.
Yeah, it is.
All the school debt is paid off completely for the schools that are local, the high school's almost paid off in two years. So as far as timing goes, you know, I'm sorry that, you know, the country, the, the macro stuff is going on, but, um, as far as where we are debt-wise locally, it is a good time. The school absolutely, um, has got, the, the, there's general agreement that the school's got to be dealt with, the school is.
How old is the school?
Fifty-three years.
Yeah, it's gotta be done.
Yeah.
And that, that's old. Um, did they talk about Worcester County pension in their, in that report at all? Because I've seen some of the Worcester communities get hurt because of that.
Didn't we talk last year about trying to get out of Worcester?
Yeah, and it doesn't look like that's a reasonable possibility.
To do your own system?
Yeah.
Or to do somebody, join somebody else's.
Somebody else's system.
Move to Middlesex County.
I, I think a lot, yeah, a lot of the surrounding communities.
We're kind of ha, we're in it.
Change the county line.
Middlesex is, Middlesex is lower than Worcester, believe it or not, they're at like forty-eight percent.
Really?
Yeah, those two counties.
Well, else he's got its own system, so they're not part of Middlesex?
Uh, which.
Well, else it's in Norfolk.
But they have their own, they have their own retirement system.
Well, what's his Norfolk or Middlesex? It's Norfolk.
Well, it's in Norfolk, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, plus they have their own retirement system. There's about sixty communities, I think, that have their own. Sixty or seventy communities that just have their own.
But we're probably too small for.
I think you're small for that, yeah, I think you're small for that. There are some small ones, but they started back in nineteen thirties when all this happened. They decided they wanted their own, and they still do.
So Andrew and Brian, do, do we want, except let Tony, um, look at this and come back to us, and then, um, take it back up?
Yeah, that's not.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, just double check it, make sure we didn't miss anything.
Double check it. I mean, this is the sort of stuff I love. There's.
You can tell.
I know, I like, no, no, I mean, that you've got a guy that is actually doing this. And he's got the bar, he's got the S and P model out, and he's studying the S and P model.
Oh, no, he's good, believe me, he's very good.
But this is what I meant by the management of the town earlier. I said, this is, you know, I, I, I walk in, I don't even know this guy, and I walk in and he starts rifling off S and P, S and P regulations. And I'm like, all right, it's expected in this town, you know? Everyone's, you guys, you, you, you're all very qualified individuals. It's, uh, it's, uh, yeah, it's, it's good, it's all good. This is great, I love this stuff.
And we're lucky to have Mr. Pfaff on the advisory committee, for sure. He's done amazing job as far as all the stuff we're about to go over to, so, anyway. So is that it, okay, for the plan? Okay, to, let's let Tony have a chance to weigh in?
Do we want to, if anybody has any comments about it now, do we want to incorporate those into what we send to Tony?
We could.
Uh, I've got a couple questions.
Okay, go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, um, just some terminology. What's, what's overlapping debt and what's self-supporting debt?
Let Brian answer that.
Self-supporting debt, Andrew, is things like water is the easiest way to understand, or CPA. Overlapping debt is like ACABET. Uh, ACABET has debt that they issued.
Okay.
Algonquin.
Through us, and, and the regional, yeah, Algonquin, things like that.
Okay, okay. Um, and following the discussion there, it sounds like, you know, we had some discussion about the, the, the last two bullet points on the debt limits about whether, you know, the pros and cons of having a policy that includes these limits, of, you know, outstanding debt per capita. Um, are those things that, those are in this policy because they were in the D, uh, the, the DLS kind of model policy? Or something we have to do, or something we could consider taking out of this policy?
Those are not in the DLS, those.
Okay.
As far as I know, there's not a town in Massachusetts that has that. Those are
All right.
Those are direct lines out of the S and P
Right.
model.
Okay.
That came out in September of twenty twenty-four, so I don't think that anybody's really incorporated them, which is why, but S and P never really looked at NPL or net pension liabilities in the old model, or if they did, it was not as, you know, important. Um, and now they've obviously added some importance to that, so that's why I thought it would be good to add it.
But it's likely that will be included in towns.
I would think a lot of towns would start including that going forward, since it's gonna be, you know.
Okay. And I took some, I mean, I took a quick stab at, based on, um, the financial statements here, trying to determine whether we currently are within these debt limits. I mean, it looks like we are, right?
Yeah, let me, uh.
Well within, Andrew.
I, I mean, the, I, the calculations I did, we were so well within them, I didn't know whether I was doing the calculations correctly, but.
As of, um, our last, uh, analysis, which is our twenty twenty-four numbers, because we haven't done
Yeah.
twenty twenty-five uses twenty twenty-four, we, for the, um, the first, for S and P, right, the current cost of debt service and liabilities of revenue, which is, I, basically the number two there, because it's inclusive of, um, all the other pieces, and it's total governmental revenues, we were at three point one four percent. Right, so we're well below
Okay.
the, uh, the fourteen there. And the way the S and P does it is it's less than eight is one point, and that's where we are today. And then between eight and fourteen is two points, that's what, kind of where the fourteen came up. Now, what, you know, stay, but, stay inside that.
Yep.
Um, and then for the other one, net direct, um, debt per capita, we are at, uh, three one five eight right now, and that kind of goes between twenty-five hundred and thirty-five hundred. And then the next one is thirty-five hundred or forty-five hundred. And with, you know, some of the debt that we're putting on right now, I thought it was prudent to increase that a little bit, to give us a little bit of buffer.
Yeah, I mean, the net pension liability number is something where
Yep.
we just have less control over it because of the pension liability element that's controlled by Worcester County as opposed to us.
Correct.
You know?
And, and right now, we're at thirty-one hundred, that goes up to thirty-five hundred is that kind of tranche. Um, and, you know, we've never been, you know, that, it's the highest now that it's ever been, but, um, you know, twenty twenty-two, we're at twenty-four hundred. So, duh, you know, I'm hoping that we don't.
So the pension liability and the OPEB liability divided by population is now a, a
Correct.
a metric.
So it's twenty, twenty-five percent of the total, twenty percent is those two.
I find that amazing, because the OPEB liability
Correct.
is so different
Right.
from community to community, because of what actuary you use. It's not regulated by the state. It's, you can use seven percent discount rate, you can use three percent. It's a number that I could turn your thirty-seven into like eighty-five if I wanted to. And, uh, just making different assumptions. I'm shocked that they actually put that in the calculation. So they've now created this significant importance on OPEB liabilities, because they've got it in your debt profile.
Correct. And, and our number
That's wild.
from the last audit was thirty-two point eight was our NPL.
Yep.
So Andrew, there's two sets of rules we're trying to make this policy conform to. One is the state, and the, the rule for the state, the law there says five percent. So that's the only law. The rest of the things that we got from the state are guidelines. So it says, the law says, you can't go over five percent of the value of your town, um, except for there's a bunch of exceptions, right? But that's a law, that's not a policy, that's not a recommendation, it's a law. Rest of those are the, the ten percent, the fourteen percent, those are recommendations that most towns do. This S and P is new that we're trying to incorporate this into our debt policy, to make sure we comply with both and keep everybody happy.
In a very real sense, the S and P is more important than the state.
So keep going, Al, so why do you, so why do you think that?
Pardon?
Why do you think that? I'm not saying I disagree.
Because I do.
If Andrew and I agree, then you'd, yeah, uh, you know, because they affect our costs, you know, the state's not going to.
Because of the bond rating.
Because of the bond rating.
State's not gonna cost us more in our bond rating.
Yeah, right. Um, I, I've got a cup, I, I've read, read this statement, I got a couple, I'm, I'm a fiscal conservative, so I think this is too liberal, but we won't go into that.
We're not gonna decide tonight.
Well, I understand, I understand. So, um, the hundred K, could, I think that's too low, if, for, for debt, and you, you know.
The most common one I found was a hundred K for ten years, and that was, the mass majority of the towns had that one. Um, some towns had thirty K, which I thought was too low. Uh, others were like a hundred and seventy-five, um, so I just kind of met in the middle.
I would have said.
I don't know what the hill that I'm.
My point is, it costs a lot of money to float a bond, and a hundred K would be pretty expensive. So I'm with you on that one.
Yeah, I, I would have.
But it doesn't say you have to do it, it just says you could do it.
I'm fine with making it larger, it's just kind of.
I would have said two fifty would be, you know, I mean, a hundred K is a police cruiser.
The, I think the original one from DLS was one seventy-five, so.
So we can talk about that on that one, I mean.
With the auto tariffs, you're not gonna be able to get a vehicle under a hundred thousand.
Well, yeah.
At all.
No, except today, they took some more of the tariff, anyway.
I do, I do think the five-year, you know, because some towns are ten, I think five is to give us the option, if we wanted to do a seven-year or something, I think five is fine. But I could be, you know, perfectly fine with the one seventy-five or two hundred.
Yeah, uh, that, that's one. The second thing, um, that, that sort of popped up at, is, um, you're trying to, uh, create sort of two classes of the sources of debt funding, which is, one is debt from the general fund, and one is everything else. And, um, I think you've got to include things like the CPA, and if we had a Stormwater Enterprise Fund, Stormwater Enterprise, and, and the reason for that is that the CPA is, for all intents and purposes, indistinguishable from a property tax. It is a property tax. Um, you know, you, you know, it's, it's an assessment, it's based on the value of some property, and you don't have a choice about paying it, and it comes on your real estate bill. Um, you know, it walks like a duck and it quacks like a duck. It's a property tax. I would have said that anything that is currently funded by the CPA should be counted again as part of the debt that is supported by either the general fund, and if you want to take the CPA monies and add in the CPA monies to the general fund, that, that would be fine. Same thing is true for a Stormwater Enterprise Fund, which, again, is, it walks like a duck and it quacks like a duck. It's an assessment, you don't have a choice, and it's based on some aspect of your property. So, uh, moving those things.
Would be included in the second one, because it's inclusive of self-supporting debt. So CPA and water would be included in the second.
Yeah, but right now, I don't think those are self-supporting debt. Those are not self-supporting debt. They are, for all intents and purposes, supported by the property tax.
I think, I disagree, I think you're right. CPA, I think, is arguable, um, but I don't think the water is, I think the water's.
Oh, no, wait, wait, wait.
Can only be issued based upon a percentage of your cert tax, not even the match.
I mean, the state says self-supporting debt is separate enterprise funds and CPA, so the state says that. I hear the argument on CPA, um, I think that was a little bit gray.
I didn't say water, I said, if we had a Stormwater Enterprise Fund. A Stormwater Enterprise Fund is really no different than the CPA. It is an assessment, it is based on some aspect of your property, you don't get a choice, and it shows up on your property tax bill. So, you know, if you want to take the revenue from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund and lump it together with the general fund for the ratio, for the perspective of ratios, that's fine. But I think the CPA, and if we had a Stormwater Enterprise Fund, or any other fund, essentially, if, if, if the assessment shows up on your property tax bill, they go together. That would be the next item.
But, uh, just to stay on that one, how is that different than the second bullet? That's exactly what.
Uh, pardon?
The second bullet there is CPA and water, the governmental fund revenue.
Fourteen percent.
Which is what you put it together, which is, which is inclusive of general fund plus enterprise plus CPA, um, that's the calculation.
So Al, you think it should all be within the ten percent? Is that what you're saying?
Okay, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, what I'm saying is, the, the, yeah, move the revenue over, so it's general fund plus CPA plus, if we had one of the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, and take the debt that's associated with it and count it, so on the, on the same side of the ledger. Um, those would be, uh, the second thing. The, the last thing, I, I, I want to caution the board, um, maximums become minimums. Um, if we adopt the policy, uh, what's going to happen, and my track record is pretty good on this, actually, we will now see that, you know, well, we're, we can borrow up to ten percent, uh, in these categories, and we will always find a way to do that. So, um, maximums tend to become the, the minimum debt that we sort of carry, and that's, that's, that, that is a risk. I am, I, I would be much comfortabler with, with lower numbers, but, you know, I know I'm gonna get, I'll vote it four to one on this one, so.
You shouldn't assume that, we, go, go right ahead.
But, um, so today, the, our current policy is fifteen percent.
Yeah, and we didn't use all that up, so I'm not saying I agree, um, but it's worth discussing. So why don't we take this back, all of us, right? Take a look at this. I think we now understand, this is a piece to focus on, is this, this box right here. Let Tony take it, muse over it, get back to what his pearls of wisdom are, and then we'll put it back on. We're meeting in a week now, we'll put it back on for the six.
I will remind you that, um, of the Dennington policy, the Dennington bylaw. So if we adopt this policy, we'll have to publish it.
You're not gonna get the enhancer.
If it's one of those, I've never been able to clear on which ones qualify.
Correct.
Ten, which you're getting now. You're getting that now, so you're gonna lose.
The Dennington policy.
This, this would not apply, this, that would not apply to this.
Okay.
The, the official word. I have one question.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, one thing that I didn't understand, uh, below that table, the policy text paragraph, uh, two paragraphs down, last sentence, the town will not issue debt obligations to construct, reconstruct or purchase capital assets that can be acquired with current revenues. I found that confusing, I guess, because in one theory, you could say anything that is, uh, up to, you know, sixty-five million, seventy million of general revenue kind of thing, you, um, are not gonna issue debt for. At least, that's the way I read it.
That was from the state, yeah.
So that just didn't make sense to me, I would beg that sentence, I guess.
You said the state said that?
Yeah.
I don't know what they're trying to get at there. Again, take a look, I found.
Yeah, I think it was, if you had the money and, you know, the cash to pay for it, don't just bond it for the sake of bonding it.
What if you got a donation from St. Mark's School to buy, you know, something, you know, you use it, and you don't go.
But again, I thought that this created a huge loophole there to argue, you shouldn't, you shouldn't fund this stuff. Anyway.
I wouldn't get too woozy over the state guidelines.
I'm not.
Um, they're, when I looked at them the first time, it was painfully clear that they didn't play nicely together, except, uh, if you had very, very long maturities and very, very low interest rates.
Well, not only that, not everybody's the same, as we know in the state. We've got quite a big difference between towns, and so this one-stop shopping cart. Um, I tried to find a white paper that really talked about why municipals should have a certain amount of debt, and I couldn't find it. There may be one out there, but I found lots of things that kind of did things on the address, but nothing that just really got to the issue as far as how you look at yourself and what really is the right amount of debt.
Yep. So I made two, two exchanges on the fly. I moved it from a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand, and I deleted that line, I think that's a good edit, so.
Okay, all right, so, you okay, Brian?
You're okay with that?
What?
You're okay with those changes?
He just changed to two hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, and then he got rid of Sam's line.
Yeah.
So, does everybody understand, Mark is sick, that's why he's not saying anything, he can't, he, he's really got trouble with, um, talking, so he can wave at us, but, um, he's off the hook for talking to us.
Let's, let's take advantage of it, what do we want to pass here?
But he was part of this group too, that's why I'm saying this. Okay, so do we have a plan as far as what to do?
Yeah, so I'll make those changes, and I'll send a copy to Brian, Brian can send it to Tony.
So Tony, if you could look at this in the next, is, we've got another meeting in a week from now, we could bring it back up.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, I'll definitely look at it before.
Anthony?
Yes, sir.
Yes, so on the, on the change you just made, to the two hundred, right?
Yep.
Uh, you're, there was scrolling pretty quickly, um, there's a similar bullet point in the first page of the policy, and did you also change that?
This one up top.
Okay.
Yeah, and then it just, that's the summary, and then the piece is down here.
Okay, and I think that's, that's, that's good, because in a lot of our recent, you know, budget sessions, where we're driving to keep the overall tax rate under a certain number, at the last minute, we have kind of looked at, oh, well, we could borrow for this, and, uh, this is something that would be, I don't remember.
We have bonded our leasing's in the last few years to try to get our tax increase every year down, so we have done that, um, this will.
So it wouldn't affect leasing, but.
Leasing is a whole separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's not debt.
But I think that, that's something that we can live with there.
A lease isn't debt?
I don't know.
Gap, gap causes it.
No. No.
Yeah, I think it's debt.
Gap does.
Maybe Massachusetts doesn't say yes. Okay, so we still have someone that's trying to join us, so can you break her over again?
Hello?
Hi, Shelley, so we can hear you now.
Okay, good, I switched iPads. Uh, Shelley McNulty, Nine Kilim Farm Lane. Um, I had a question about the unfunded pension liability. Um, in terms of the budget that was laid out and that's being used, you know, in the projections to kind of tell us what our, um, our tax would be in fiscal thirty-one or whatnot, within that budget, the annual required contribution that we need to pay towards the Worcester, you know, unfunded pension liability, is that, what is that like assuming? Is that assuming, uh, ten-year getting fully funded? I guess, I'm just trying to understand how much, you know, how quickly are they, are we paying down or amortizing the unfunded part of that liability versus like the normal cost?
I think we should explain to you what's in that projection. You want to talk about what's in there as far as the pension expense and then what's in there as far as?
Uh, benefits was a five and a half percent overall forecast. And it's part of the, uh, it's buried in, yeah, it's in, it's also included in the same line item of the, of, it's the total benefits, so included with the healthcare and, and.
What did you assume for pension going up?
We've always assumed between nine and eleven.
Ten, yeah, ten is a good.
Yeah, because they, they came out with a statement.
Ten is a good number.
Okay, so let's make sure Shelley understands what we're saying, we're kind of talking to ourselves. So Shelley, in that projection that goes to fiscal year thirty-two, there is embedded a assumed ten percent increase in the annual contribution to the Worcester pension system. On top of that, the way we do OPEB is we basically pay as we go, um, as far as people who are retired today, we actually, um, pay for their health insurance, et cetera. And then we also put in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the OPEB trust. So that two fifty is also in that projection for each year through fiscal year thirty-two.
Mm-hmm, so is that, the ten percent increase in the annual required contribution on the pension side, that would get that pension system fully funded, um, in line with the state's like deadline? Is that a correct assumption?
The state's deadline is two thousand and forty. Uh, Worcester I believe is two thousand and thirty-four. Um, so Worcester is planning to fund it with six years earlier than the state deadline. Um, but yeah, that's basically, um, what that's attempting to do. It's attempting to, uh, say if we, and the actuary has said ten percent is a good increase in assessment and as long as we get our assumed rate of return on planned assets, uh, for the next seven years and we make this ten percent increase in assessment, then you should be fully funded.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and.
What is the assumed return on assets and what's the mix that you're assuming between equities and bonds in our portfolio?
Seven point two five right now is the assumed return on assets.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Seven point two five.
Okay.
That's the assumed rate, um, and I believe it's a mix of seventy, seventy equity, thirty, uh, bonds, fixed income. So, um, so the seven point two five is a, it's a little high.
Mm-hmm.
Most are in the sixes now because of the, the fixed incomes dropped. But, um, you know, Worcester has come down to seven point two five. That was, that's, that was one of the other things with Worcester, they, they, they kept it at seven point seven five for the longest period of time while everyone was reducing it and, and it works inverse. So, um, if you have a high discount rate, your assessment is less.
Right, yeah.
So that, that kind of caused some of the problems here with the, um, the fifty percent. And, uh, but that's, that, right now, that's, that's the goal, is if you can earn interest on your, on your assets at seven point two five and you increase your assessment by ten percent through two thousand and thirty-four, theoretically you should be fully funded. Um, but ob- obviously we can't see ten years out, so.
Shelley, next meeting, May sixth, next Tuesday, we're going to have the actual, um, discussion on this in detail. Um, they couldn't come tonight, the actual pension and OPEB, um, actuary. So they'll be here next Tuesday to go into this in even more detail.
Okay, great. Then just one more question on the OPEB that we, so we put money towards OPEB. Are we meeting our normal cost when the amount that we're putting away, is that equivalent to the normal cost for OPEB? So that we're not accruing any more unfunded liability related to?
Well, the normal cost is budgeted, right? Annually, um.
Yeah.
Oh, the normal cost, yes.
Normal cost is budgeted annually, so whatever your cost is for your retirees, that's budgeted annually. The amount that's being put away is the amount that's being contributed towards the unfunded, uh, OPEB liability.
Okay, is that in an irrevocable trust so that we get to use a higher discount rate? Okay.
Yep, yep, and that one is six point eight percent, the discount rate. And, and it earned, uh, I think about what, nine or ten percent?
No, it earned more than that, it went from one eight, like three ninety-five over one eight, so twenty-something percent.
Uh, oh, are you talking fiscal twenty-five?
Talking, what's in your report? You've got this in your audit, no, this is fiscal twenty-four.
Let's look.
Our calendar, whichever.
Let's, let's, I've got it on page.
You do, it's like.
You earned twelve point eleven percent, it's on page fifty-two in twenty-four.
Tony, look at page twenty-one.
Page twenty-one. Yep.
So we had a million eight sixty, now we did put in two fifty, right? That's, that's where we got the, um, six forty-five, but we earned four hundred thousand dollars.
Uh, you had, you had three and you earned three ninety-five, right?
Yep.
So you had three million, three, three million thirty-six thousand.
All right, so twelve, so you're right, twelve, so I was doing.
Yeah, so twelve point three.
So I looked at the previous year, okay, so.
That's still a great return.
I bet.
Yep.
I mean, the, the history of the returns is on page, um, is on page fifty-two is the history of the returns. And you'll see there's one boo-boo there, twenty-two was a negative thirteen. But other than that, in twenty-one you earned thirty percent, in twenty-three you earned eight percent and in twenty-four you earned twelve percent. And then you had the one boo-boo in the middle, which everybody had.
Let's keep moving here.
All right, thank you, Shelley.
Sorry, can I just ask one more? Is the, um, the rating that we have at S and P, is the fact that we don't have like a stabilization account, rainy day fund, is that like a negative towards our credit rating at this point or?
We have been told, it's not, they don't look at just stabilization, we've been told this point blank, they look at a lot of things. We've got a big levy capacity on top of that, so we've got other things, they look at the broad, um, um, other reserves we have too. So it's not just the fact that we've got a stabilization that is seven hundred thousand dollars. So there's other things they look at to determine whether they think we've got the capacity to assess enough tax to pay our bills.
Got it, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
And that is one area, if, if you think this debt thing is going to cause some slippage, one area that you can manage is your reserves because you do have capacity. So you could put more into stabilization i- if you felt, you know, that it was going to be a problem. So, so when I go through the ma, when I go through the math and talk to some of the folks out there that I know, um, you know, we'll, we'll see if this is good. I don't think it's going to be, I don't think it's going to be an issue, but, but if something jumps out, you know, I'll let you guys know. And then you can manage other areas of your score to kind of balance it out.
Yep.
Good.
Okay, so anybody have any other questions for Tony? Um, thank you, Tony, for driving all the way here.
It's nice to get.
Seriously, no, this is.
It was nice to get out.
This is, this is a good team.
Yeah, no, it, it is, it's a really, um, you guys are fortunate. Um, if one of these folks were to leave, it's nearly impossible to hire anyone that's really can, can bring.
Don't advertise it, actually.
So Tony, I'm talking about you too, you, you know, yours, you know, from what we had before to what we have now is a market, um, improvement? Let me just say that, so we, I'm talking about you, you're part of this team.
The first meeting I was going to have with you guys, Carla said they're tough, be prepared. I laughed at her, I said, Carla, come on, I've been doing this for forty years, you know, it can't be that scary.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, we are tough, can you tell? Um.
No, you're a good group, I love talking to folks that know, you know, know this stuff, finance people, they, they understand it. When I, I, you know, when I do these meetings and people are just staring into space, it's just, I, I.
I know, we, we look.
This is great.
We look forward to this, so, so thank you.
It's good, it's good, and if Linda was here, it would be even better because she gets into the whole thing too. We'd be here till midnight, but she, she gets into the, I'm glad we did it on separate days.
Break it up a little bit, okay, so thank you.
All right, you're welcome and good luck and send me that, send me all that stuff and, uh, we will advise.
Appreciate it.
All right, thanks, guys.
Oh, thank you, Tony.
Nice to meet you.
You, you guys can't leave.
No, they're going to be here for a while. Um, okay, so the next topic is, we're back to Andrew again, so Andrew has done a.
And Brian.
And Brian, um, have done a really deep dive into the consequences, estimated consequences of the NEARI project on town tax bills, et cetera, for the next seven years. He's actually even gone further, he's got a rev cap that goes up to what, fifty-eight? So he's done, he's done a lot, he has truly.
It's dragged out, the accuracy is.
He has spent hours and hours and hours on this, so he is going to show us where he's ended up here.
Sure.
And I've got this hard copy, if anybody wants to see it that way. Anybody that want to crank around, you got yours? There's probably two there. Okay.
All right. I don't know where this, the system thing is here.
No, he's sitting here, so he was sitting, he was.
I don't know how to make that go away, anyway.
No, no, no.
Um, so I, yeah, I did, we're with Brian, so Brian did the original twenty thirty-two forecast when we started this process, so I basically took that. You know, we double-checked the, the growth rates, um, worked with Becky Pellegrino in the, in the superintendent's office to come up with a forecast for the schools and for the, and then a forecast of the schools, um, assuming we move to a four-grade school and close the school, what are the operational savings for that? Uh, I, I can go down to the bottom, it's probably the most important thing is the actual assumptions. Um, and I also ran this by Mr. Stabelli in terms of our new growth, our assessed value calculations and our single-family parcel calculations. Um, for the EQV and the assessed value calculations, um, I have that forecasted out for about sixty years. Um, for the next fiscal year, um, I got some figures in term, from Paul in terms of what he anticipates is going to be. Obviously he hasn't finished all of his, um, assessments for the year, but he had some good guidance percentages for that. And then the next, uh, five years, I used the Fannie Mae Economist survey, so he sends it out to, they send out basically a survey of what various economists, I think it's about a hundred of them, think the next five years housing market is going to be. I took the average of that for the next five years, roughly is about three point eight percent on average. Um, and then I used a different economist that, what they would estimate if a commercial real estate, which is about a two point one eight percent increase. Um, and then personal property, I used a three percent increase, which is basically a conservative estimate of the last few years. You know, I can go through, free cash was a slight increase, it's, it's still pretty low, right? I, I think that's very conservative here. The whole point of this was to basically make it as conservative as possible, um, in terms of what the, what the effect would be on an average single-family home. So, the split and the migration and shift from commercial to residential or CIP to residential is growing. So, and the shift between within the residential class of non-single-family to single-family is also growing. So basically, it's, you know, as this goes along, it's shifting more and more burden to the single-family homes, which has been the trend, uh, that I wanted to continue to make sure that we were being as conservative as we could. Overlay, one percent increase, again, very conservative, local receipts, state charges, two percent, um, again, conservative. Um, the budgets, public safety was a four point seven five percent based upon the new CBA and all this came from Mr. Ballantyne. Uh, the budget, other budgets are four point two five to four point five. The school budget came directly from the schools, uh, and again, they incorporated, uh, the, the nine FTE reduction savings for combining schools. The capital articles, we, we baseline in with talking with, uh, Mr. Malinowski from CIPC, basically a five percent increase on how much we spend every year. On top of that, we included, uh, you know, with the, the help of Mr. Hamilton, um, two five million dollar road, um, sidewalk bonds, um, which in talking with, um, Mr. Condiff of DPW, he agreed that if we did those sized bonds, um, removing, uh, the four hundred K annual road maintenance fund could be done. And, you know, we would still have our chapter ninety funds and the additional that we get from the millionaire's tax. Um, but the, basically the acceleration and doing stuff with a bond would basically alleviate that kind of, you know, that, that additional uh, annual cost of the four hundred thousand. Liability insurance is eight percent, basically it's an average history. Uh, debt service, again, we can go through the full table of items, but we did, um, add a couple that, you know, weren't, weren't on the capital plan. Um, we added a library in, in twenty thirty-four, um, or twenty thirty-two, sorry. And, um, what else have you have in there?
Atwood.
Atwood cleanup and, uh, some, some, I don't think that.
The roads were, so it's the three.
The roads, yeah, exactly, so those are the big three things. And, uh, you know, the debts there for the, the, um, for the thirty-year bonds was, for NEARI was four point two five. We used a three point five percent bond anticipation note percentage and, uh, that's the basic, just they're happy to go through, you know, each and every, uh, line item, but this is basically the, you know, the total government, again, there's a four point five percent increase in here, um, which again is, is, you know, probably at or a little bit above what it has been historical, so I think we are being, you know, conservative of that approach. Um, here is the actual list of, of projects we use for the debt service. For anything new, we used a five percent, uh, interest rate, again, to be conservative. And then, so this is the NEARI scenario. Uh, we did another scenario, basically the no to NEARI, um, which is basically, basically the same assumptions. Actually, let me go to the bottom because that has the delta between the two. The difference in assumptions, basically, you know, the yes one has the FTE reduction, the no does not. The capital articles, um, we included, uh, I think it's roughly about five million dollars total in, you know, deferred maintenance that we've had, um, on the capital plan and the, um, VERTEX kind of, uh, building assessment plan that they had, um, done in twenty twenty-one. Um, you know, small maintenance items and things like that, new.
Things that you have to do to keep that building open.
Things that you have to do to keep that building open, that we should have done a couple of years ago that we've been putting on hold. Here are the, the new capital items that we added in terms of capital articles, not, not debt service. And again, you can see a lot of these are small, you know? You know, uh, wall hung urinal for twenty-five thousand, you know, dollars for all the urinal upgrades, you know, just smaller things. Um, and then, you know, the differences in debt service, obviously there's the sixty-seven, um, million dollars for the new NEARI school. The diff, the reason why people aren't seeing that usual, uh, sixty-eight number is because the other piece is the debt for the feasibility study, which has already been approved and we've already done that, I don't think we've issued the bond yet, right?
No.
No, so, so that will come anyway, that's in both scenarios. Um, and then the second one is three million dollars, which is an estimate from, uh, Mr. Parent in terms of what it would cost to move some of the town offices, well, you guys will talk later in this meeting about what the plan is for Finn, uh, but move some of the town offices from Cordovaill Hall and South Union to, um, Finn, you know, renovate those to, you know, put up some cubicles or whatever you need to do to make it into an office. And then if, when the people move out of Cordovaill Hall's lower level, add a lift there um, so that the seniors can use the lower level and, and do some light renovations down there to, to do whatever they need there. Um, and then obviously in the second one, you know, the, the bigger debt service for the actual school is the roof replacement. Um, I packaged up any of the debt, of the projects that are over fifty thousand into a little package of debt service. Um, you know, two million dollars roughly and you can see what's in there, but acoustical tiles, cabinetry, um, some of this kind of stuff there again. This is all from the two thousand and one, uh, VERTEX, uh, report. Um, and then I took from the two thousand and one ADA report as well, that looked at all the town buildings. They had a number in there of about one, uh, a million, uh, five hundred thousand, or what, what, million? Uh, one point oh five million for ADA compliance at NEARI. Um, and that was, so I adjusted that for inflation, uh, to about one point three million. Um, I'm not sure that's all encompassing of everything that we would need to do to ADA. It was a little, bit difficult to see in there if, if every bathroom was upgraded to being ADA compliant or just the mandatory ones that you would need to have enough in the building. Um, so, but I kept it as a conservative number there. Um, because I think, you know, that's an important feature for a million dollars, let's make it ADA compliant if we're going to hold on to it for a significant future. Um, and basically that's the difference between the two scenarios. And then at the bottom, you can kind of see the difference between the, uh, debt service and interest. And then at the bottom, you can kind of see the difference between the, uh, debt service and interest, between the two. And if we go back here, here's the, the average single family, uh, tax bill difference. And, um, it's about six hundred dollars between the two scenarios. And here, you can kind of see where, you know, obviously, this is the difference between one and the other. One has NEARIE debt, one doesn't. And then, you know, the budget articles and the debt and the interest, that's that NEARIE debt. The capital articles, again, is that's the things we would need to do to NEARIE to keep it open. And then the school budget is that operational saves. That's the basic, basic difference between the, the two scenarios.
So he, he did all that. Brian looked at it. Um, it's, it's been looked at pretty close. Capital was not directly involved because we didn't have time, but capital, we, we talked to Jason. He knew what we're doing. I told him, you know, we were probably stepping all over his toes. He said, fine, understanding why we were trying to get this done. So he, he knows what we did. Um, Bill Kondif did weigh in on this as far as what the capital plan looks like from his perspective. He, he, um, vouched for it. So then we took that and we said, okay, uh, we've got a nine hundred fifty-seven thousand dollar house value right now. Let's show people what their house value, um, if it was their house, what the impact to their taxes were gonna be. So we then engaged, um, so Andrew, we engaged-
Let me put that one up.
Mr. Lit, um, to help us put together what we're calling the calculator, um, to let everybody put their own, um, house in there to see what the impact of this project would be on their taxes each year between fiscal year twenty, um, six and thirty-two.
Here's the calculator here. I figured might as well use myself as a guinea pig. I can do anybody else's that they wanna see. But basically, you can go in here, you can type it in by address, by owner, uh, account ID or parcel ID. And big thanks to Tim Lit for all the work he did on this. The numbers that are in here, I calculated. Um, I, I did a per parcel, um, assessed value increase. Again, as we've increased different categories, I used that same growth rate by the different, uh, use codes to increase the current twenty, FY twenty-five assessed values. Then using those assessed values and the tax rates I calculated above and, and, or in the other format, in the other sheet, with the two scenarios, was able to calculate an estimated tax bill, um, not inclusive of CPA, so just the, the regular general fund, uh, tax, um, in that no scenario, yes scenario, and then the net NEARIE contribution. And then from there, you can go in and, and if you click the detailed budget, it'll, it'll bring up that PDF we just saw. And then the primary website would take you to the NEARIE Building Committee website.
So Andrew, all someone has to do is type in either their address or their name. Those first two, the other two, they probably wouldn't have Israeli available, and this populates automatically.
Correct. And if you have multiple parcels, it will create another one there. If you click the little print, it'll, it'll open up a PDF version that's easy to print or save down. Yeah, that's, uh, what we've been up to.
Looks very slick. Thank you.
Thanks. There's, there's another, um, simplified calculator that we did, which uses the same percentages, but it allows people to just type in an assessed value. This is more mobile-friendly kind of a thing. But it's the same kind of, kind of gist and calculations.
So can you go back to your computation?
Yep.
Okay, so to me, this is the, um, important question. I actually wish Tony had stayed for this piece of it. Okay, so look at Andrew's taxes, projected taxes for fiscal year thirty-two with the yes vote. So twenty-one thousand, one, two, one, right? Of that twenty-one, one, two, one, we believe that six hundred three dollars of that is related to the new NEARIE building. Six oh three is what, two and a half percent if I'm doing the math? So twenty-one times, so, three percent of twenty-one, one, two, one. So the question is, do you think, um, I would say in my accounting world, and that's why I wish Tony were here, that, um, and this is a real concept, that six oh three is immaterial to the twenty-one. The twenty-one's not immaterial. It's, it's a significant portion of everyone's budget, no doubt about it. But the six oh three, um, has come down from over twelve hundred since we started doing the work as far as reducing the cost, increasing the estate contribution, which is now thirty-five million dollars. So that's where we are. So, um, this is to let people, instead of looking at average house, look at their own house and then they can make their own determination what they think about that six hundred three dollars.
Yeah, and so that if, you know, the yes scenario is about a forty-seven percent, um, increase, you know, over those seven years. And then if you look at the no, it's about a forty-five percent increase, so.
So the, um, the no assumes that we keep NEARIE in the mix-
Correct.
And renovate NEARIE.
Yeah, but be careful. Al, this is where this is conservative. This is really important. Not really renovate it, just truly do the basic stuff that VERTEX said had to be done to keep it open. So it's not the base repair that we looked at.
Understood.
That was fifty million dollars. This is truly spending five million dollars.
Keep the lights on, keep it, yeah, keep the roof from leaking.
Okay, and sort of the, a, as opposed to, um, operating in a three-school configuration with the existing buildings. And, you know, I, as I've talked to people about this, I've said, you know, were we to go to three schools, we are still going to have to spend some money to configure those schools.
That's a-
Be a great appropriate, you know.
Correct.
And I don't know what a, not that number is, but, um-
But it's a number.
It is a number. There's, there is no question about it. It's, I don't think, well-
Yeah, I mean, it's tough because again, that wasn't really a scenario. The one scenario that's closest is Woodward did have an ad reno scenario of a four hundred and five students, so basically a three-grade configuration. And again, I'm not sure, you know, if that we're talking apples to apples and apples to oranges, but I think that was about a hundred million dollar renovation at the time. I mean, obviously, we've, we've been able to get a little bit more of a reimbursement and do things like that, but that was one of the, uh, options that came out of that.
Okay, Marguerite, do you have any questions about Andrew and Brian's?
No, can you just state if an, if a resident wants to use that calculator, how they'd get to it?
There'll be a link on the project website. I'm waiting for one little bit of, of technical update from Jason.
No mic, Andrew.
That's all, I'll say it for Tim. So what Tim was saying is, so this is right now on Tim's, uh, it'll be migrated over to the NEARIE Building Committee website. And you can find the link there. We just need to, uh, have our, uh, webmaster and Tim get together for a few minutes and make that connection happen, but it will be available on the website. The other simplified one that I showed, where you have to type in your own assessed value, but it does have a link to, um, Mr. Stabelli's list of assessed values. That one is live right now, and you can go in and actually type in your numbers. It's just gonna show you FY thirty-one, which is the highest debt service, so that's the worst-case scenario. It also has a calculation in there, which is the total thirty-three-year impact of the project.
Okay, just- So Marguerite, it's NEARIEbuilding.com. Okay, that's where you go.
NEARIEbuilding.com, everyone. The other thing, is it po, is it possible to get it up on Southborough, Share and Care and onto my Southborough?
Once we get the link up, I'm planning to post it on, on Facebook and my Southborough, I believe.
My Southborough's coming first, so there's gonna be a big, um, um, there's a letter that we've approved, the committee's approved, to go on my Southborough with all the links in it. That goes first. Then the finance committee is gonna do a separate letter right after that. Then the, there's gonna be a site and then there's gonna be an educational one. So it's gonna be like four letters in my Southborough, boom, 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 but the links will be there to use that to get to it. I'm not sure about Southborough, Care and Share, if-
Facebook.
Or Facebook, okay.
I will, I've already told people I'll post the link once it gets up on-
Thank you, and thank you, Tim. I'm sure this will clarify for a lot of people.
And maybe tomorrow, getting up on the website.
Yeah, Tim's working on it. There's just a glitch with GoDaddy, so they're trying to, they've had to put a ticket in.
Andrew, just out of curiosity, and the one you had up there previously, that you could type your number.
Yep.
What, what do you get when you put six hundred thousand valuation in there?
We can just press over here.
There you go.
Study here, three eighty-two.
Three eighty-two.
Yep, and I, and again, Tim, Tim did a, a, a great job as well, as we looked through all, basically, all the assessed values, did a whole statistical analysis, looking at, you know, what is it like within one standard deviation? What level would that be? We're gonna add to our presentation. We, we always use assessed, our average single-family value. We're gonna use median as well because it's a little bit lower and a little bit more accurate. There's some outliers that are kind of skewing the average.
We think be, median's really a better metric, um, because of what it means, you know, it's in the middle. The, the mean, because of all the high-end houses in Southborough skew that. So we think median's really a better number anyway. State uses mean instead of median, so we've always used average. But we do think median's really a better-
Mean's a lazy thing to do, and median is clearly the barrier in this case.
What, what is the median value?
Hold on.
I think it's like eight fifty.
Let me pull up my giant.
And then what happens when you do eight fifty and six?
The median, current median right now is eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred. And the FY thirty-two is, uh, one point one two.
Put eight sixty-eight in this on the screen here.
Yeah, and just so the eight sixty, for FY thirty-two, the median is one point one two one, and the average is one point two three six. So it's usually around a hundred thousand dollar difference. But let me put eight sixty-eight into the calculator for you.
All right, so do the median.
There you go. So it's about a five hundred fifty-three impact of the project in FY thirty-one, and a total cost over the thirty-three years of about fourteen thousand. Because you gotta just be careful of taking the worst-case scenario year and multiplying it by thirty. Yeah, it's not exactly the right way.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
It actually gets better, Sam, as you go out, because the debt service stays flat, right?
Right.
Um, you know, in inflation, you know, debt gets cheaper and cheaper. And then the savings from the school, um, operations goes up because, you know, you're getting big salary increases, big benefits. So that delta is, narrows as the time goes on, so it actually gets better as far as the impact.
And I kept that kind of the, you know, the FTE save growth, um, pretty conservative in terms of what the actual growth rate, I think it was three point eight five percent, which is, is pretty low. And that, it's inclusive of benefits. Um, I didn't want to be overly excited about that. But when you think about it from a real cost perspective, on a thirty-year project, there's going to be people that would have, you know, retired, who would have had OPEB liability, who would have, so it's the, I, and, and to be honest, I was very much in the, I want a two-grade school, the cost is too much between a two and a four grade. I don't really see the, and, um, at the very end, I was convinced for a four-grade school. After the operational saves, doing, going to a three-grade, three-school configuration and the operational saves, the difference between a two-grade school and a four-grade school with the operational saves is, is significant. It basically pays for itself.
So say that again. Say that, make sure that really comes home, what you just said. Because I, I was in the same boat. I was gonna do two grade, um, but-
I don't know if I have the calculator open, but, um, so I think that the benefit of the operational saves, I believe, is sixty-eight million dollars over that thirty-three-year period, right?
Which you don't get with the two-grade school.
Which you don't get with the two-grade, right? And the difference in cost between the two-grade and the four-grade, I want to say, was thirty million dollars, right? So there's a, the net benefit is there for, to go from a two to a four.
And then you get all the educational benefits with the four grade.
And, and, you know, to play devil's advocate, there are other three-grade, three-school configuration options that are not on the table right now, but for what we have, that, that's why.
Yeah, the, the reality is, if the operational savings are real, they're worth about seventeen million dollars in terms of, you, you take the operational savings and you-
Present value then.
Yeah, present value.
Oh, present value, okay. I was gonna say, over the thirty-three years.
Yeah, no, you, you, they're, that, that money would fund about seventeen million dollars worth of borrowing for thirty years.
That's not trivial.
If you believe they're real.
Yeah.
Okay, Marguerite, anything else you wanna ask? Andrew?
I'm, I'm good. I, um, I was able to access the website. I put in my information. Right now, if you go to this NEARIE, uh, lit, lit.s.us, the password is, is, uh-
Correct, it's, it's still in beta right now, so we're, only a couple of us have access. But once we, let's step on the website, the password will be removed.
Under, understood. Okay, thanks.
Sam?
I'm good. Good work. Thank you. Very helpful.
Al, anything else?
Nope.
So I think Tim Fling wants to come over.
Hi, y'all. Tim Fling, eighteen Main Street. Andrew, a quick question for you. Uh, just I wanted to make sure I got all the, what you said was covered in the no. You said that was the capital items before. What exactly did that, um, no number entail?
For capital items?
Oh, just, just in general, you, um, the no number that you showed, I just wanted to make sure I heard all the details or what's in that.
Yep, so on the site, there's a whole, um, yes versus no section. So when you get to the, there's capital articles, right? Again, that's just cash. That hits the general fund and it hits it in that, um, capital artic, uh, budget articles, oh, sorry, capital articles line here under town. And the full list of them is in here, you know, cut and patch deteriorated asphalt areas, you know, you can go through the whole list here. So it's just, it's mostly smaller things. And then when you get to the actual debt service items, um, here, I, I kind of packaged up anything over fifty thousand dollars into one kind of package of things. And these are things over fifty thousand dollars that were supposed to have been done up to this point or in FY twenty-seven. So it's basically like, this is stuff we should have done already, combine it into one thing, do a big project to get it done. And then, um, you know, I think I did it over, uh, I can't remember what it was. I don't wanna say ten years.
And they didn't because we thought we were gonna have this project, so they didn't want to do it.
Correct, yeah, and that was, you know-
They may knock the building down, so.
Yep, and that, the, basically, the idea is we're not gonna do any of this because we thought we might close the school. So, um, if we're not gonna close it, you know, accelerate what we should have done and, and kind of put it in the package. Again, it, you know, we could debate whether or not we need to replace the wood cabinetry and with sinks in the classrooms or not, but I thought it was, there was a report saying that all this should be done by this point, use it as a proxy. Again, all this would have to go through town meeting for approval, but, um, I wanted to at least put something in there to show that, you know, we need, still needed to do some things to NEARIE, just to keep the lights on. We're not doing a full base repair, which is about forty million dollars. For the construction cost, it would be about sixty million with the, the, the different pieces and about a thirty-eight million dollar net to the town.
And this, and then Andrew, this covers ADA compliance on that line as well?
Yep, that's the ADA, NEARIE ADA compliance, adjusted to inflation to one point three million. That, again, the one oh four seven two two five number came from the two thousand and one ADA report from, I wanna say it was Beta Consulting Group. That's the number they came up with, and I just carried that forward again, you know.
So Tim, if you go to NEARIEbuilding.com and hit the finance tab, you'll see all this.
Okay, perfect. And Andrew, what was like the total number? I think it was five or six million of all that together?
Yeah, that sounds about right, everything added together, because these, this was, um, this is two, this was one point three, and I think the roof replacement is like one point four, one point five. Um, and then it was, uh, whatever the number is over here, total one point three, so one point four, one point three, two, seven, and, uh, two, so, how about four, seven, one, three, six million maybe, roughly?
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Nope.
All right, so everybody happy with this one? Okay, for the moment?
Very happy.
Okay, so I'm gonna switch next to, so that Brian and Carla can go home earlier than they might otherwise. So let's, let's do your Q three report, then we'll do discussion of Finn. Is that okay?
Works for me.
How do I stop share?
So you wanna come on up, Carla? Come back? So everybody's got their Q three financial report in their pa, in the package?
I have one more question. Could you just explain why there, in, from fiscal twenty-seven on, you have zero for debt and interest in your budget projections?
Just shut up.
Oh, uh, it's all carried in, um, one-
One line, okay.
It's all, I, all in one. It's, that's the school side. I just put everything in one.
I'm sorry, where, where did you put it?
This debt interest, so it's, it's all in this eight million.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just, it, it just, I put it all in one.
Under the town side.
Yeah.
Okay, guys, you're, you're back on.
Okay, this is our, uh, quarterly report. This is through March, March thirty-first, so a little more recent than, for Tony going over the FY twenty-four results. A little more recent. So, um, as usual, we'll probably move very long, and if you have questions, that's great, but, um, we'll hit the high points and see if you have any further questions. So, um, I'll do, we'll, we'll just chime in as necessary. But, um, the general fund totals- But the general fund totals, and by general fund, I do mean primarily local receipts. We're going to change that title next time. It's not really general fund total.
That's my question today.
So, yeah, it's, Carla mentioned that to me.
Good question.
And she's right. Yeah, so it's really local receipts. But they're running very well. We're waiting for sort of a dip in this, and so far, we haven't seen it. It's about a little over seven hundred thousand dollars. Again, we'll put the usual cautionary notes out there that two hundred thousand of that is miscellaneous revenue, which miscellaneous revenue is miscellaneous things. IOD payments, all sorts of odd prior year refunds.
Yep.
AR things like that.
We got a seventy thousand dollar light rebate from National Grid. So that's, that's obviously a huge number, right? When John upgraded the lights.
Right.
And this year, we're seeing, we have a lot of IOD folks out on fire. And last year, we had IOD folks out as well, but we had vacant positions. This year, we don't have vacant positions. So it's a little bit different of a situation. But we have, of that miscellaneous revenue, over a hundred thousand is for IOD, which unfortunately can't go back to the budget. It has to go to the miscellaneous revenue. But I sent out a memo last week from Chief Puntini that he may need a reserve fund transfer. But the money that we're getting from IOD can't go back to the budget. It's kind of, you know, we'll get it in free cash. So that is driving that local receipts number up.
So again, the, and it's probably similar from the last quarter, the motor vehicle excise tax, investment income that Tony mentioned. And the two little bit different things, the building permits, because those can be from year to year. And police detail had quite a bit of growth this year. We get a ten percent fee when we bill out police details for administrative costs. That's just general fund revenue, and that's way up this year. So again, I mentioned the cautionary note. The water, we're always talking about water and concerned about that. Have increased over half a million dollars, which is good news. We're coming into the key summer months, not too far, July through September, June through September, somewhere around there.
I have a question on that. I mean, do we seasonally adjust the, the revenue figures or is it just straight line?
We adjusted the, the fees. You guys voted that.
The water receipts?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
It's straight line or seasonally adjusted?
No, it's based on seas, seasonal, seasonality.
Well, this is actual revenue.
No, understood, understood.
Right, but when we set the budget, it's based on the, the usage.
That we anticipate.
Takes into account the seasons, I guess I'm trying to say.
Yeah, that we anticipate, yep, yep. But we don't, we, the increase is not up in the summer, like the rates are, the rates for the fiscal year.
Yeah, the rates.
But it doesn't fall in line with the July, July to June. Yeah, good question.
Is the rocket launch picture supposed to symbolize a bust or a remedy?
That was Brian, that was Brian.
It's revenues taking off. Let's, let's hope.
He picks the pictures.
So we're, you know, interestingly enough, right now, well, as of thirty-first, we're hun, we're only a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars short of our total projection for this year. So that obviously was probably exceeded, maybe even exceeded by now. So we're doing well. I mean, it's, it's good news. I, it's just straightforward, good news. So the expenses, and Carla can jump in whenever she wants. You know, for the most part, smaller, I won't say immaterial, but fairly immaterial things that we may need to deal with at the end of the year, the end of the year is sort of coming up. So as you know, we will have a, depending on what we do, we'll have either reserve fund transfers or interdepartmental transfers by the end of the year, or sometimes right around the end of the year. So look forward to that. That will definitely happen.
We're looking at fire, fire may, you know, due to the IODs have a, a transfer. Maybe we're looking between sixty-five and eighty thousand. We're hoping it's on the lower end. But Chief Puntini's, you know, eyeing that and doing what he can to save where he can. And then at the town clerk, he's working on the numbers, but his expenses are higher this year due to town meeting and the special town meeting. So I, I don't have final figures yet, but he's anticipating something. He'll have some savings due to salary savings in his department, but I don't know if that's going to cover it. So just so we're all on the same page about that.
He's got two special town meetings in this year.
Yes.
He's got two.
Right, right.
In, in speaking with the clerk, I mean, the, one at Algonquin is going to be quite expensive. I think he's been north of fifty thousand dollars.
Well, not anymore because clickers aren't going to be used, so he's going to save fourteen for that. But it's still going to be a lot compared to what we're used to. It is still going to be expensive.
Yes, I think the, the fire, the clerk, the bigger ones, the rest are fairly, like I said, probably small things that we may have to deal with. Benefits, I do not know yet. I'll know probably starting this month, I'll start getting a picture of where we're going to end up at the end of the year. I'm a little nervous of that one every year. But because of the retiree price, the etnary increase that we didn't expect as of January first, that put a kink into the year, so I don't know if we're going to be able to absorb it or not. But I will know probably in two to four weeks, I'll have somewhat of a good idea. So those are the things we need to watch out for. Hopefully, there's nothing else that crops up. I'm not aware, we're not aware of anything.
Not aware of anything, no.
We'll, we'll keep the board informed.
And the good news is there's been no reserve fund transfers voted as of yet. So we're still intact for the moment, you know, with that, so.
So that's good.
That's a good thing. Focusing on the positive.
You do this one.
Oh, ARPA, yes, yep. Actually, we just had another federal report that was filed this week for ARPA. It's an annual report. But we are clicking away. Everybody was responsive, and we were able to encumber everything for twelve thirty-one. We're down to just eleven projects that are out there out of fifty-two, so that's pretty good.
We don't expect any problems with those eleven in terms of getting the money spent?
Um, I don't believe so. I, I was going to give them a little break, but now that, you know, after town meeting, I'm going to get back on them, you know? Everything's encumbered, so we have, worry of contracts locked down, so. And we, one of the things is the, the back parking lot, which is shaping up quite nicely, so.
Yes.
Yeah, that should be done very shortly, probably by mid-May.
It might be interesting to publish a list of those fifty-two projects. I bet most people don't know what they are. So maybe one of Mark's, heard on the street, letters, not enough space in there.
Yeah, certainly, yep.
Put it on the front page of the, or, or put on the front page of the website, saying, here's what our ARPA money has done to the town, kind of thing.
And we spent every penny of it.
Easy to do. I'll pass that along to Mark for sure, yep.
Please listen.
Yep, yes. Am I listening, Mark? Okay, got it? All right.
Can't speak, please listen.
In FEMA, I feel like it's the same update all the time, but we have one final claim. I filed it back in May, and I keep checking once a month, how are we looking, what are we doing? We did sign the contracts. Brian signed the contracts and got it back, mailed back to FEMA right before the president decided to say, well, we're going to put a hold on everything. But they are trying to expedite it. I talked to them today because I was just saying, you know, did you get our contract? Anything we need to do? And our contract was sent in in January. So it's just time. They just, you know, it takes time. The last claim, it took eighteen months to get through. This one, I'm hoping we can get it by the end of the year and get that amount written off, so, or, or recovered, not written off. But, yeah, since twenty twenty-one, we've received six hundred and seventy thousand dollars from FEMA, so. So that's a positive, closer to the end than the beginning.
Hopefully, you can see this. This was a little trick, trying to make this readable, but I thought it was worth it because of the sunny vibes it gives off. So the town audit, and I, I forgot to poke Tony about this and talk about why it's, why it was delayed again. But there's a number of reasons why it's delayed. But I think he would have said, with the new, there's a lot of new requirements for GASB and the reporting and all that. And some of it's dependent on Worcester Regional, some of it's dependent on Linda's information. So he, he's depending on various other, you know, points of information that may be delayed. So he's, it's not easy anymore like it used to be. But we are going to try to keep trying to get that timeframe down a little bit because it is stretched out a little, a little long now. So the audit, obviously, tonight was done, the OPEB next week. We'll listen to Linda. That should be interesting. Again, you're probably sick of hearing this because we just heard it tonight, but NERE, possibly Finn, voted pretty soon. Library, everyone knows, we're not moving forward for a bit now on that. So that's, that's that. This, you will be hearing from me probably in June because the, the NERE schematic design money and the CPC for the townhouse comes up for renewal in June. So we'll have to decide what we're going to do with that. We don't have definite, it might depend on what happens with the NERE vote. So I've got to get John to give me a final cost for the CPC. I think the board's aware that, and certainly CPC is aware, that we're going to be under budget, which is good for that project, a couple hundred thousand, it looks like.
We're here, the windows.
Yes, so we'll get that, we'll get a solid number from, from that. And then we'll see how.
Are they going to close that one out? Because that's a lot of money to go back, right?
So we're, we're not going to borrow all of it.
Okay, so that's.
Which is good.
They won't.
We're going to borrow just what we need, yeah, so we shouldn't have a big overage. We do have the, what, the preservation restriction?
Oh, yes.
That CPC is looking to do. I'm not sure exactly the holdup with that. But we have one money from the library, and we have money that we need to set aside for this, for the preservation restriction, but.
But haven't they still assumed they were going, it was going to cost whatever they allocated? So they've at least got a schedule that says, when they're trying to determine what they can bond going forward, they still have that wrapped in there, right? So it still would give them the ability to bond more going forward, right?
In the future, yes.
For a CPC, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yep, right.
So, you know, obviously, the last few things of what we did several weeks ago with mostly DPW with the culverts and everything. I don't have, I'm not sure Bill knows yet exactly the timing on that. But depending on the timing of that, you may see me for that, too, to, to get Bill some cash so we can do those projects. And then, like I said, once NERE is decided, either yay or nay, we'll, we'll work out some financing plans for the rest of the year. And then just a reminder, we've already said it, but the tenth and the thirteenth, hopefully, the residents can attend the special town meeting and the town election.
So one thing I think that's important to bring up now because I don't know if anything's happened since annual tummy to make you know that we need to do something in the fall as far as money goes, as far as budget goes. But the plan right now is to have the fall special town meeting later than usual. Now, Paul Sabelli is well aware of this. He was part of the meeting where it was discussed. Because there's some zoning changes that may be brought forth, and the planning board needs time to get those done, do their hearings, get them all set up. They're, they're on board with this, too. So we talked about maybe November having the special town meeting, which means no budget stuff can, can happen. He's, he's, he's going to be done at that point with his, his tax rate setting, his classification hearing. So keep that in mind if something comes up that you would have planned to have put on that special tummy money-wise.
That's a very great point. Yes, because November would be.
Too late.
A little too late, yes.
There is one item, which is, you know, we are applying for one-stop grants for wastewater, and those typically look for a local community match on the order of twenty-five percent. So that is something that might come up in this timeframe. Because my understanding is that we would have to commit the funds by the end of fiscal twenty-six. So we're going to have to figure that out.
So we'll just have to get it all figured out. If it, if we were to be lucky enough to get it, then we'll have to maybe go to Plan B here. So the zoning thing is important, which we'll, we'll talk about later in as far as how to get that done and when to get it done. So this is to give the planning board as much time as they need to get it done. So you could always have two if you had to, you know? I mean, I don't want to do that, but you could.
Just to say, everybody stay in communication and we'll continue to watch developments here.
Sure, and if anything arises from now till the end of the year, you know, from any of the departments, I'll be sure to pass it along. But, I mean, right now, everything is trending pretty, pretty well, other than those.
We could also, by November first, we're going to have free cash certified. So we could also appropriate that, and that wouldn't hit the, the, the tax rate, so you could do it that way, right?
But I think you still have to include it in the recap.
You do, you do. It would delay the recap a little bit.
Right.
Might be possible, but it'd be tight.
I think, just think about that, but if we get, we get this grant or we get the other one, we got three that are on the table. So if we need matches for those, we, we don't want to not get the grants. Okay, anybody having questions for our funding team? Andrew? Nope. Marguerite? Al? Sam?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Seriously, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody want to take a break? Andrew's not here to take a break.
I don't know, but it's somewhere. Yeah, I'll take a break.
You're not here, Andrew? Are you taking a break?
Yeah.
Okay. You want a break? We'll take, we will reconvene at five to nine-nine.
Recording stopped.
Have at least a outline of the process and at least have some guardrails on what's going to be done so someone doesn't think that there is a plan to build a $15 million community center.
And Capitol knows the history of the Community Center Committee, so it can include that as appropriate. But I do agree Kathy that it's good to have a focused approach here and Capitol seems to me to be the right group to actually consider this, put the numbers together, put a plan together.
I mean, what's, so Jason's going to do the presentation on the 10th, Andrew's going to do the presentation for advisory as far as the impact on the town. But what's Jason going to do when someone says, what about Finn, does he shrug his shoulders? I mean, so we're trying to give him something to, that we've guided them, this is not part of the Niri Building Committee, this is Select Board, give him some general guidance as far as what at least we have done to answer that question.
Yep. This makes sense.
Okay.
Um. Something's got to give here and, you know, because I've had an awful lot of people in the last month, month and a half, you know, come up and thank me for being a skeptic on the Niri project because they are terrified of the taxes that are in this thing. And, you know, I can't tell you how many people are afraid that they're going to be taxed out of town. And everybody's got to give a little. I would, I'm going to get in trouble, but, you know, I don't really care. We may need to reassess the decision, you know, we may want to keep the seniors happy, you know, I'm a senior, but at some point, we've got to have some fiscal discipline here because if Finn were to become a municipal building, we're going to have a lot of empty space in that building, given the spaces, given the uses that you've just described, you know, that does not fill that building up in any way, shape, or form. And, you know, we're going to end up paying for maintaining it. That building is due for an overhaul in the next 15 years, you know, like, like every other building in town. And that overhaul is going to be, you know, it's going to be a seven-figure number because it just is. And we may not be, we may not be able to afford to do all of the things we want to do or keep everybody in their current places and try and manage our tax rates so that we don't tax people out of town. I mean, you know, my wife is as good a liberal Democrat as you will ever meet and has never met a government program she doesn't like, and now she's giving me grief about the tax bills and, you know, asking me what I'm going to do about it. I'm trying, but, so I don't want, I don't think we should be precluding, I think we have to do a gen, if this passes, I think a general reassessment of all of the buildings in town. And I don't think, I'm sorry to say this to the folks at the Senior Center, but I don't think we should have sacred cows, you know, because everybody's going to have to contribute something, or we are going to ta, start taxing seniors out of town and we, you know, the, you know, we are going to be looking, you know, in eight years, we're going to be looking at average tax bills of $20,000. And, you know, you have to ask yourself if, if you're living on a fixed income or, you know, you're, you haven't got a six-figure income, you know, whether you're going to be able to pay your, your share of, of that increase. This is a hefty increase and frankly, I'm a little skeptical because the, you see big increases, it's a classic hockey stick, you know, we see big increases now, but it's going to be better in the future, I promise, really going to be better. So, I, I got to say that I think we need to do a top-to-bottom review of all of the assets of the town because frankly, there may be some that we want to sell. And, you know, that's, that's my two cents, I'll get off this soapbox now.
No, that's okay. Let me just say this, there are times when you get the impression that you believe you're the only fiscal conservative on this board, this is not true. I don't want, I have strived mightily for my advisory days to here, to do everything that I thought we could do to hold real estate tax bills down. You and I met a few years ago, long before you were on Select Board, when I was running by your house or something, and you say Kathy, we've got to replace people with automation, we've got to really start being more productive, whatever, I said, agree, tell me what to cut. And so it's easy to say we should cut, it's hard to find what to cut. We have, we try every year to get this budget down. So I'd still say the problem with taxes is not Niri, it's the total, that $20,000, it's a lot of money, right? So if you want to broaden this and say we want Capitol to come back and what we really want them to do is look at all the buildings, we could do that, but the point is, we want people to understand that, I think, two things, as far as the Niri Building Committee project. We don't have a $15 million community center on tap coming six months later, that's not the plan, make that clear. There is no one that I know of that has said turn Finn into affordable housing, I don't know where that came from, it hadn't been uttered in this board. So what we're trying to do is provide at least a framework so people understand that there will be a plan for Finn, maybe there's going to be a plan for other buildings like 21 Highland. I just said that if we move them out, that building's empty, so that leads to a discussion on what to do with that. We've got a committee that's going to come back by June 30th and make recommendations. So I am absolutely in the same page with you as far as trying to find a way to cut taxes in this town. I am as concerned, I mean, four out of five of us are seniors sitting here tonight, right? Andrew's the only one that's not. So I get it, I went to the Dolmens Club last week, I hear them, but I don't think Niri is the problem, the project, I think other things are causing, we've got a small town, it's got, we've got fixed costs, we've got a very small base, there are good things that are coming that will be obvious, I think, in the next few months that are going to help us as far as trying to spread that base, which we all know we need to commercially. But we've got to say something Al, on the 10th, as far as Finn, because we can't just stand up there and go, right? So help me, what, what do you want, what do you want Jason to be able to say on the 10th?
Well, I think you can certainly say that we have no plans to turn Finn into affordable housing, because I'm not aware of any either, and I'm as attached to affordable housing as anybody.
And so am I, but I just don't think it's Finn.
Right, but, right, there are no, no plans. There does need to be a complete reassessment of all of the capital assets of the town if this passes because we cannot sustain all of the assets that we have. And so we need to be rightsizing the asset, the asset base, and that probably means an expanded role for Finn, and maybe that means, you know, we may have to deal with some sacred cows. I would not promise the seniors that we're gonna, you're going to get to stay in Cordova Hall. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I know that, you know, people get attached to it and it's a nice facility, but I would not make that promise because those same seniors are coming up and telling me, you're taxing me out of town. And so, you know, that building costs money and it has value, and maybe we could, you know, we, we can't have it both ways, so.
Okay, so what if we do those two things, right, say those things, but add a third to it, which is there are no plans to build a $15 million community center.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So there's no plans for another big building project, say it that way, so we at least let people know that what they're looking at here, there's no, another shoe to drop as far as a year from now, we want to do this on top of that.
Right.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right.
But we're still asking Capitol to come up with a plan.
Well, I think Capitol's got to, I mean, we've got to get Capitol involved in this so they can start looking at this and come back with an open, so, but we can give that specific charge. I mean, this is just to get through this special town meeting and have something, have that question and answer to it, a reasonable, broad answer to it.
I, I did have one point, the library needed to expand because it doesn't have any storage space. And I think Finn would have space that's safe to put things at the library, we have stuff packed into the stairwells.
Yep.
It's, it's a mess.
Yep.
We have no attic, the basement is rooms to meet in that are full of pots and pans from the cooking club, we need space there, and I think Finn would.
Good use for Finn, yep.
Okay, good enough, those three things? Okay, everybody agree?
Yep. Al, let me add one more point, I, I think that, you know, I hear the same thing you do in terms of taxes. The issue for me is that I think we're, we tend to focus on some of the wrong issues here, in the sense that I don't think we can cut expenses to relieve that pressure on taxes, given the shift that we've seen between residential and commercial property. That seems to be moving along, that's driven by real estate prices and so forth and economic conditions on Route 9, et cetera. To me, the issue is finding a way to generate revenue for commercial taxpayers along Route 9. I think that is what can dig us out of this particular hole, and we are working on it, as you well know. So that to me is, is the safety valve here, in terms of being able to not have to do such draconian cost cutting potentially, and finding a way to keep the pressure on residential property taxes to a manageable level. That to me is the path to success here, it's not fast, it's not easy, and we are working on it, but I think that's the key to success with this.
I, I, I agree with you completely that, you know, growing our commercial base is absolutely critical. It's a slow process, you know, I'm not, probably not going to benefit from it, you know, you know, but then again, you know, like, like you, we don't buy green bananas anymore. But, you know, to get to the promised land, which is eight to 10 years out, which is realistically when we can turn the, the, the super tanker around.
Combination of things, but that to me is a key part of the process.
But, you know, I think, as you know, I'm, I was willing to cut heads this, this time around, and next budget season, I will be ready to cut heads again, and I think.
And you may have a lot of support for that, too. One of the re, you know, your hockey stick, there's a reason for that hockey stick, it's not a made-up hockey stick, we can go through.
They never are.
Right, but no, there really is a reason for it, so we won't go into that, I don't, so we think we've been way too conservative with next year's budget because I don't think we're going to improve that kind of tax increase, but that's what we had to use because we don't, we haven't made that decision. So I agree with Sam that the big picture is get that denominator much bigger so that that ratio goes down, and we really do help people.
But we got to, but the people who are in town today need to know that we're listening to them today, and that means, you know, that we can't have untouchable things, you know, it can be painful, but we can't have untouchable things. I, I've said my piece.
All right, so we're happy with the three things that Jason can, okay, are we okay with that?
Which are that we want you to look into how to use Finn, it's not, not going to be the new senior center, and it's not going to be a affordable housing project, right?
Right, and we're not going to do, we have no plans to do another large building project if the Niri, beyond the Niri project. Once we get past that, there's no new school, there's no new, brand-new community center like the, the group came up with. So, yeah, that's what I think we can say as far as a broad, so that we do, they do understand, they can look at the numbers we've given them and understand that if that's palatable, they, they're not looking for something else a year from now that would make this even worse.
I'd like to underline that the Cordova Road building works very well for the senior center now, and it's sort of organically happened, and they like it.
They're very comfortable there, there's no doubt about it.
I think it's a, it's a good place for them, and I don't, I don't think we should even think about putting them anywhere else if they don't want to go.
Well, I agree that they should definitely have a big voice in where they are, given they asked for so little, but that's down the road. I'm just trying to give Jason the ability to answer a question with Select Board direction.
So, in, in the end Kathy, I, I, I think the proposal you made makes sense, and I'm just thinking, you know, when there's very kind of complicated interlocking issues, I think the best way to often proceed is we just go slowly, step by step. Because all of these, you know, discussions about if this passes, what do we do with this particular building, they're all so complicated, and there's also, I think, very broad popular support for keeping each of those properties pretty much kind of looking like they look like right now, you know, they're all, they all affect individual neighborhoods, so that's all to the point of I think why I take this slow approach is probably the best way of handling it.
All right, so Tim Fling, his hand raised.
Tim Fling in Kine, I just wanted to say as a member of the Community Center的设计委员会 committee, something to maybe think about, too, there was a couple zero or near, not zero, but near zero cost options on there with different level of renovations. We ended up doing the senior center as, I believe, a moderate renovation, everything else is a low cost, and that was where most of the cost of the $15 million funnel report came from. There might be something worth looking back at that, though, at that funnel out port, that might help some of this conversation now, because part of the building was a library annex, the other part was the senior center, and the last part was rec, and rec was almost wholly not touched and was like a move-in-ready situation, which would have cost the town pretty much nothing. So it might, it might be helpful for this conversation to look back at that funnel report, and do know that there's tiers that would be worth noting now.
Okay, thank you, Tim, and of course Jason is well aware of it, so he will. Thank you. Okay, that's it. Okay, so I'm going to try to speed things up, we, no Freddie, no Chris, no Bob? Okay, so we're going to skip the 21 Highland Committee because no one's here to do the report, okay? They're supposed to be done by June 30th, so I'm not sure we're ever going to get.
It looks to me like there's a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
Kathy, I, I would just say since we've now, we've, we have scheduled this and postponed it, I think.
Three times.
Several times.
Three.
That maybe one of the things we could do is just, I could say, you know, acknowledge that we've received the report, I mean, if there's any feedback we can give to the, it looks basically, this report, it does not have a lot of substance to, to at this point. I mean, the one concrete suggestion that I would have to it is that one of the things I think the committee should consider is, are there leasing options for the building that would make sense, that would enjoy popular support? I think that's kind of touched on indirectly, but I think that's something that they should look at. Other than that, I think we can maybe just, if anyone else has any feedback, we could provide to the committee, but rather than scheduling this like a fourth time, you know, where the, where the report doesn't really say that much anyway, I think that's maybe the best way to proceed.
I agree with you, there's not anything here to really talk about, they've got a whole lot of work outlined in the report, if they haven't gotten that started, then I'm not sure they're going to get it done.
Time crunch, yeah, and again, I, I agree that there's a lot of tasks outlined here, and to me, the crunch is to actually get moving and get this stuff done. I don't disagree with the list, but time is now extremely short, so.
Two months.
Let's focus and get it done.
All right, everybody agree?
Yes.
Okay, all right, let's now speed this up. Okay, so Chairs' report. I wanted to mention the NEC 5K race on May 3rd because they were very gracious, that, that race was supposed to be on May 10th, the date of the special town meeting, but we, we asked them, Mark asked them to move it, they did. So I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of it, it's a very big fundraiser for them. The, the work that this organization does is truly wonderful, needed, et cetera, and we've got it right here in Southborough, so we should all try to support them to the extent we can. So it's May, May 3rd at 10 o'clock at Niri, if anybody is wanting to run. I almost, I haven't run in a couple of years, so I almost got out there and started running to see if I could do it, but I've been so busy with Mr. Pfaff, I haven't had time, so I don't think I'm going to make it, although I guess you can walk if you want to, okay.
You've got to stay mobile for town meetings, so don't hurt yourself.
That's right, that's right, that's right. Okay, so I'm going to pass these out, remember Mental Health Month is coming, they've asked us to wear the green ribbon to honor it. They have got a lot of stuff planned, and it's going to be posted, I assume, downstairs, et cetera, but it's really good stuff, so we should try to make sure it's on my Southborough that people really see this and hopefully participate. One I do want to point out is, and give Rotary a shout-out, Rotary's going to do their food trucks like they have the last three years, same place, and on the 20, is it the 28th? Yeah, 28th is the last day of this Mental Health Month, Awareness Month. So on that day, at the community center, Youth and Family Services hosts a vet, they recognize a person that they're going to honor, and give the Lori Schugerman Whittier Award, but it's also the night of the food trucks, so it's a nice thing to put together, especially if it's a nice night, you know, get your food, then come across and do that, and back and forth. So shout-out to Rotary, too, for doing the food trucks for the two Wednesdays in May and two Wednesdays in June. Okay, Hopkinton Water Connection, at last. So just to, everyone's probably forgotten about it, right? So, you know, we think we have some problems in Southborough, I'd say that compared to Hopkinton, we, we look pretty good compared to what they've been through, but anyway, they've been through quite a few things. You know, this thing was almost done, we had an IMA, they just needed a couple tweaks, and they ended up, the DPW superintendent left his job, went to another job, they hired a new person, they had, they've got a new town manager, the Select Board had some issues they turned over. So anyway, they have formed a group that is similar to our old Public Works Planning Board, is what I call it, it's an advisory board, and they have now met, and they have discussed how to solve their water problem, and guess what they want to do?
Connect to South.
Yes, so decided that the connection to Southborough is the better way to go, so we are about to start meeting with them again soon, Mr. Butler's very involved. Anyway, Tim T's from PAR, he's been designing all the way through with no IMAs, they've spent already, I think several million dollars on the design with no IMA. So, anyway, that's the update, I'll, we'll keep everybody posted when things happen, so we've given.
Kathy?
Yeah?
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Of course.
Because, you know, town meeting appropriated money for a peer review, I'm trying to remember the process.
Yes.
This should be a, a peer review for Southborough of the project that PAR has designed for Hopkinton.
Correct.
Right, yes.
$200,000, and they keep asking us, go ahead and do it, because they have to pay for it, Andrew, they reimburse us for it, so we're not going to, we don't, we pay for it.
Because, I mean, this is.
Go ahead.
This has been bubbling up, and I'm glad this was on the agenda here because didn't, we also recently, I don't remember in what context, in one of our recent meetings, like a, we were discussing some of the water improvements on like Lynbrook Road, and, and it just reminded me that, you know, there is a very specific set of water improvements, infrastructure improvements, that we looked like have a deal ready to go to get Hopkinton to pay for that in exchange for the connection, so that would be great to get that finally rolling.
A million dollars for that.
You know, I agree, as Bill kind of said when he first, okay, this is a win-win, why would anybody not want to do this? So, anyway, slow off the mark, but anyway, so I'll keep you posted, but at least we have, we have heard from them.
We, we can't really do the peer review until they sign the IMA.
That's right, they want us to, but we keep saying, no, we're not doing anything until you sign it, so you may get way down the road and have to redo some stuff, but that's on you. So they're well aware of the risk of continuing the design without the peer review being engaged, so yes, that's exactly right.
And then, and then the IMA is the mechanism through which the additional Southborough-specific water infrastructure work would be.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, got it.
I mean, that contract was done, all we had, there was one thing we needed to, to work out, but the economic terms were in there, they had agreed with them, so it really was kind of a shame it didn't get done when they should have.
I actually had a chance to chat with the new DPW director, who is very eager to get this done and is frustrated that it hasn't been moving, because there's real pressure from town to get it done, so puzzling in terms of why.
Well, let's just say they've got a funny way of showing their eagerness, that's all I'm going to say.
That's right.
Okay, enough said, enough said, let's get it done. Okay, so Mark, do, Al, you want to do yours next, and then, Mark, I can either do yours or you can do it.
Real quick, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is in the process of updating our housing production plan, which the state requires us to do, and we plan on signing a contract, I believe, Thursday morning, where we will pick one of the two vendors, it's going to cost us about $45,000, it'll come out of the Affordable Housing Trust. That's it.
And that's just FYI for us, right?
Yeah.
All right, Mark, do you want to do your two? Okay, Vanessa's going to do your two.
Yeah. So we just wanted to recognize the retirement of Cindy Henderson Beard, who's been our outreach coordinator for nearly 27 years, so Cindy is going to wrap up her wonderful career here with the town on June 30th. So we extend our congratulations, and obviously, many thanks to the many, many senior citizens that she's helped, you know, over two and a half decades. And also just wanted to thank our businesses that were affected during the CSX road closure, April 22nd to 24th, that went really well, that wrapped up very nicely, and we're appreciative that all that work is now concluded.
Agree on both counts. Okay, Consent Agenda, we've got minutes from the 1st, the 3rd, and the 7th. We have got the pay rate for election workers, and we've got, does anyone have the executive session minutes? I still didn't see them.
They, they were distributed.
So you, you guys have read those?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just abstain. Okay, so, anybody want to hold A?
Yes.
B, C? So you're going to be okay with C? With the executive session?
I wrote it.
Oh, okay, sorry. Is it going to be okay with C?
I have many typos.
All right, so let's, I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda items B and C.
Second.
Roll call vote, Andrew?
Aye.
Mygri?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Cook is aye, 5-0 for those two. Okay, Sam, minutes.
April 3rd, couple of scriveners, line 21, mass school building authority, not administration.
Yep.
And line 64 sees value in the project to meet, just left out a word there.
Sees value in project to meet the educational needs, okay?
And that's it.
Okay, I've got one on that one, it's, it was Thursday, April 3rd, not Tuesday. Everybody agree?
I've, I've got an edit on April 3rd as well.
Okay, go ahead, Andrew.
On line 71 mentions Patty Burns Fiori, who I see in the audience as well, I think her, it says she's at 3 Rock Point Road, I think she lives on Winter Street instead.
She definitely lives on Winter Street, I think it's 10. So just put Winter Street, Bridget, you don't have to put the exact address, put Winter Street.
I actually have a comment. Comment on minutes in general, and I'm going to give it here, we produce these exhaustively detailed minutes, which are well, well beyond the minimum requirement, and Brian Chase had something useful the other day at the wastewater meeting, which is minutes need to record votes taken in the absolute minimum number of things, and, you know, if somebody really wants to see what, what's been said, they can go and watch the video, and our video, our meetings are all videoed. I, I think we could save some money on minute-taking if we went from these detailed diatribes, detailed descriptions, to, you know, this is what was discussed, the topic that was discussed, these were the motions that were made, you know, the minimum required, because, you know, this is, you know, just one of those little expense things that, you know, that's made sense in the 18th century, it makes no sense in the 21st.
But you know, there's a reason for this, it wasn't always this way, this is because things are recorded, they've got the videos, they can go back and watch, and she can rewind, this is just not us, there's a lot of minutes that look just like this, all the way through it, because you can go back and you've got it recorded, and you can keep repeating it until you get all this, so you've got the ability to do this.
Right.
You didn't have that ability before.
This costs us money.
I, I didn't, I didn't say I didn't disagree with you, I'm just saying there's a reason.
I know why, I know why it is, because.
Believe it or not, Al, we're making progress, I've actually been making this point for five years now, and we were about half of what we used to be when we started, so not that we shouldn't or couldn't go to another half.
Yeah, let's, let's get the other half done, and save some money on minute-taking. I'm off this soapbox.
Wait a minute.
She does, okay, so a minute-taker's coming over to talk to us, come on over, Bridget.
Good. And Bridget does a wonderful job.
She does, she does.
Thank you, no, but I just wanted to clarify that Bridget Rubin, recording clerk, that the length of the meeting determines the payment, you're not paying extra for the detail that I provide, and I certainly, I welcome your comments, Al, and I will take them, if you want the minutes done more in a looser fashion with less detail, I'm happy to do that, but what determines my pay is the length that you guys talk, so that really is how it's structured.
See, Al, because of, so now, okay, now we know how to cut it down.
There's a soapbox surcharge here.
Yeah. I'll just speak up, Bridget, Bridget, I like, I like the way you do the minutes right now, I really wouldn't change a thing, and also, it is true that there are video, YouTube videos of all these meetings, but I often find it useful to, instead of re-watching a meeting and having to forward through a bunch of things, just to have a set of minutes where you can do a word search on it, so I wouldn't really change anything about the way we do it, I think you're doing a good job.
There are many times where the detail has really helped you find what you're looking, and go back and look, so there are times that it really does help.
And sometimes the video, you can't hear.
And sometimes the video, you can't hear people.
And we have made progress. I could live with what we have now, basically.
All right.
Look, I've gotta hold, I have, I have a significant edit, I think, to the April seventh.
Okay, so, we're finished with April third?
Notice this.
We finished?
Yeah.
April seventh? That's the one I did.
Well, there's something very significant in there if I'm looking at it.
All right, so, we're done with, we've got first and we've got third, right? So, first was fine.
Yeah.
We only amended third, right? Correct?
Yeah, so, on the April seventh, it was on the posted agenda for the board to vote on the Neary School project.
Oh, my gosh.
And I don't see the minutes.
Well, that's a Freudian slip. You're right, Andrew. Okay, so, I will fix this one because I did this one. So, Bridget, this is not you. This is me. So, thank you, Andrew. Okay.
Absolutely.
Don't hire me as a minute taker, please. You know, I dictated this to Melanie because I was in such a hurry. Oh, my God, can I believe I forgot that? Okay, so, yes, we did vote on the Neary project, four to one. All right, so, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from four-one as written, four-three as amended, and four-seven as amended.
Second.
Roll call vote. Andrew?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Cook is aye. Okay, moving on. Okay, so, we normally do this. We just take a look at what we thought went good, what went bad, what we should change as far as annual town meetings. So, anybody wanna start as far as what they thought, what, what we could change if we chose to? Marguerite, you wanna start?
I think the lighting level in the auditorium made it difficult sometimes.
And I'm not sure there's anything they can do about it because I asked Greg about that at a different meeting. He said, "That's it. This is all you can do." So, I, it is low, for sure. Okay, so, lighting, if, so you want it higher, right?
Yes.
Anything else?
I've got a comment. There was a point where I think it was John Tominey said, you know, he was, thought that we could do a better job of putting out information in advance, maybe on the website, about not just the articles, right, but also the.
Motion.
Motions. Because there was confusion in the audience about, you know, I think the moderator and town council did a good job of explaining kind of technically, you know, for some really important articles like the, you know, collective bargaining agreements, why just the text of the article said, "We're gonna, we're asking town meeting to appropriate a sum of money," right? But obviously, people wanna know how much. So, it probably is not, doesn't affect the upcoming special town meeting as much, but that's something that we probably can do. You know, even if between the, our last select board meeting and the time of the town meeting where, you know, Mark and the select board staff put together the contemplated list of motions, that's something we could put up on the web. And then there's just, you know, probably some thought should be given to the most effective way of like, what do we put up on the screen so that people can follow it?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we need to publish at least the draft motions. Because I've had a number of people ask me about the Neary warrant, which does not describe any money at all. And they ask, you know, what's gonna happen? And I try to explain that, you know, the actual motion will be slightly different that, you know.
The motion will include the number.
Yes, but, but the warrant does not.
That's right.
And that, you know, there's enough fractional information going on. We need to clarify that. I, I think that the second thing is, we need to make the clickers work and just, you know, get in the habit of using them, you know.
Others do. We're not the first. They can work.
Yeah. This ought to become the normal way we vote.
So, you're hearing that one. Okay, so, anything else?
And Kathy?
Go ahead.
If I can make another comment of the clickers. You know, there were some, I don't know if it was too many people, but some loud voices, you know, questioning whether the clickers were working correctly, et cetera. From where the vantage point that I saw, you know, I could clearly see there was a representative from the clicker company who was there, who said he thought this was simply that the vote, the number of seconds, the window, the vote was kept open, just was maybe too short and that whatever discrepancy was, there were, were people who were voting before the vote opened or after the vote closed. And you can take care of that with a simple like, you know, if it's the same company that the US House of Representatives uses, which I think Mr. Hagerty said, you know, maybe there's some light that's put up on the screen. The vote begins now, thirty seconds, have a countdown clock, right? Then people start to get used to it. But there's, I, I trust the system way more with the clickers than the.
Tellers.
Just taking these, look out into the audience and, and do a quick, you know, determination of whether something is two-thirds or half, something like that.
And I've watched other town meetings that use them for all votes and it goes very smoothly. So, it's certainly possible to make them work very effectively.
We should not give up on the clickers. I think we should try, still promote them and develop confidence in them.
Hold on just a minute, Tim. Let me just make one comment. As Tim knows, last night at the planning board, Mark Davis and I were there just to talk about the project, field questions from the planning board about the project. And at the end, there was a question asked by a resident about the motion for the thing. So, it is confusing. So, we are going to post the motion for the special town meeting ahead of time, which will include the hundred eight million dollars, da-da-da. But the warrant article is exactly what the MSBA gives you to put there. So, you're doing what they make you do. And the motion will have the number, but we will get that posted ahead of time as far as that goes.
Well, Kathy, and, I don't know, there might be a way where, since my understanding is the motion has to be for the gross amount, right?
Yep. He's gonna explain that.
I don't know if there's a way you have an asterisk on that that just explains that.
He's gonna explain why that still is the cap on the project and why, so, that's all gonna be explained because that seems to be an issue too as far as other things go. So, that will be explained, Andrew. Okay, so, we all agree clickers need to work, right? Okay, anything else, Andrew, as far as post-mortem? Andrew? No?
I have other thoughts, but I'll just leave them for another day.
So, Tim, let us get through what we're talking about, then I'll come. You wanna talk about clickers?
Yeah, I was just gonna make a comment on that.
On clickers?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Tim Litwood, I don't wanna, particularly wanna give up on the clickers, but I think the notion that simply waiting longer is simplistic and wrong. I looked fairly carefully at what was going on with mine. My first vote did not, was never counted. The second one, when Hagerty and company came walking up the aisles, it was a good ten minutes before it registered and it only registered because Jim intimidated it into finally working. I'm, from an engineering point of view, I'm convinced that it's more likely to be radio frequency interference, channel overload, people's phones in the thing. It's not just wait longer. Someone has to seriously take a look.
My approach agrees with you. So, we'll get it resolved, right? There is, there's a solution here. You agree?
There, I'm, I'm sure there's, there's a solution, whether it's, you know, taking people's phones away, I don't know.
Well, that's probably not gonna happen.
But I just wanna dispel the notion that it's likely to be just wait a little longer and it'll work. I waited ten minutes. It didn't work.
Okay. So, we're not using clickers at the special town meeting because there's too much concern that they won't work and then there'll be general distrust of the vote, et cetera. So, there's gonna be no clickers at this special town meeting. Okay, I've got, I've got some more things. Mine are more about the articles. So, I thought we had, select board had a pretty good night. Budget passed. No, no changes. There were a couple of proposed amendments, but they didn't pass. So, I thought that was good, given the big increase in a couple of budgets. I thought there'd be more of an issue as far as those go. There was a blog post that said, "I'm surprised Kathy Cook didn't do a report or do something up there about those budgets." And I just replied, "Look, we had the police chief, the park chief sitting right there ready to talk. No one asked a question." So, I was surprised. The, we, the two CPA articles that were substantive passed. So, we've got the Affordable Housing Trust money where we wanted it and we've got a pretty good project as far as the rail goes. So, I thought that was good. I was surprised when Beth Melis explained that part of it was missing because of the road project. I didn't know that, but it still needed to be done. So, I thought that was good. I'm sure the planning board was very disappointed with what happened with their articles. I mean, they got the parking done. I'm still not sure why they didn't try to have twenty-eight voted on because they only needed fifty percent on that one. They had more than fifty percent on the twenty-nine. So, I'm not sure why they postponed that one. But they did. If they thought there was some conflict in language, they could've fixed that, right? But they didn't. So, anyway, see what they, they're gonna do. I haven't heard what they plan to do as far as coming back with revised articles. Braytonak Hill article, that one surprised me. That's the one I had the motion. I had talked to Melissa, so, you know, it would've helped to have Melissa Danza there. So, we'll get that fixed as far as whether it really is time to close that out and do that in November. So, I'm not too worried about that one. I think, this is, this to me is lesson learned. I think we should again try to encourage people who we know have small issues with the budget to come to advisory, select board ahead of time and let's get them resolved. Claire, twenty-seven hundred dollars, right? Bonnie, twenty-seven thousand. Try to get those small things worked out ahead of time so we don't spend so much time talking about things that are truly immaterial to, to the budget. Let, let the time be spent talking about the, the budget as a whole and digesting exactly what they're trying to vote on versus spending so much time on small things and then kind of ignoring the big things, which is we added three policemen and a deputy fire chief. Not one person asked about it.
I've had a couple people approach me asking for a mechanism for across-the-board cuts, which are difficult at the moment to do, they're impossible at the moment to do.
North Board tried to do it the other night, fifteen percent across the board.
Yes.
We've had that proposed.
Well, Tim Lit did it two years ago, a one percent.
Beg your pardon?
Tim Fling, sorry. Sorry, Tim Lit. Tim Fling, Tim Fling.
The other Tim. And I think, I think we ought to think about a mechanism. The, the notions that were expressed to me were that citizens who are frustrated that, you know, that they, they can't really have an impact on an individual budget, they just wanna be able to, you know, reach a lever and say two percent and let the hall vote and that there ought to be a mechanism for that. And, you know, it may be that it requires a bylaw to do that, to, to set that mechanism up. I know you.
Far too simplistic for me. I, I think it's a legitimate concern to say, "I wanna take two percent out of this budget." But I think you need to do it in a way that makes sense as opposed to blacking everybody by two percent.
Ah, you know, sometimes the meat axe is.
Yeah, but two percent to a small budget means a lot more than two percent to the school budget. So, we can talk about it.
Yeah. I, I think there ought to be a mechanism, I, you know, I, I, you know, I've had some people who know this, our budgets well, suggest that.
Well, Mr. Butler was one that I believe you talked to and he, I think, tried to call Tim Fling to talk about it and then didn't get, didn't get that done. But whatever, so we talk about it. But, you know, another way to do that is to come to some of the meetings we have when we're talking about budgets and then.
That seems like, for a lot of people, that seems like, you know, inside politics, it's, it's, it's.
If you care about it, you ought to be willing to do the work.
I know that, that's a view, but that's not everyone's view and, you know.
Can you imagine fifteen percent? I mean, it didn't pass, but apparently it went on, it went on a long time, I guess, before they didn't get it done, so.
You know, you do it once and you probably won't do it again. Don't touch the stove. It's hot.
All right, so, but continuing on my vein, the time that it took for Claire to talk about the twenty-seven hundred dollars, Bonnie to talk about the twenty-seven, people, the other reason people don't come is because of the time, right? We've, the meeting started at six-thirty, ended at eleven-thirty. We had five hours. This was a pretty straightforward warrant. We should've been able to get it done a lot faster than five hours. So, we gotta continue to try to find ways to make things, deal with important things and not get hung up on things that are fairly minor.
That's the purview of the, of the moderator, really, isn't it? I mean, that's, that's the moderator's job if, if we feel that it should be faster.
You're right, that's right. But we could also, you know, if we knew Claire was worried about the twenty-seven hundred dollars for that, we could've dealt with that ahead of time. If Bonnie had come to us before she did, which was the night of, to say this is what she wanted to do, she was at the public safety meeting that day. She could've said there that she didn't like the way we were staggering those and we could have at least discussed it. Anyway, okay. Sam?
Nothing that hasn't already been raised.
That's what you get for going last.
I was delighted that we got out one night.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, thank gosh, so we did.
Very helpful.
And of course, we, you know, we have also encouraged citizens and petitions to try to get those resolved ahead of time too, so we don't have so many of those. And we only had one. So, that was heading in the right direction.
I think the moderator did a good job of moving things along and he didn't shut people down, which is good.
Yeah, I mean, the, the reality, this is legislation. There's nothing neat, tidy, and efficient about it. It just, you know, I've been going to town meetings as long as the rest of you and, except maybe for Andrew, he's still a kid. But, you know, compared to Congress, we're, we're a paragon of efficiency.
All right, so, that's what we'll, we'll.
Low bar, thank you.
So, there's two people?
It is a low bar.
So, bring them over. Patty, go ahead.
Hi, Patricia Burns Fiore, ten Winter Street. I just wanted to make a comment in regard to what you were talking about with people wanting to reduce budgets during town meeting instead of discussing it with the select board or committees ahead of time. I know there were a number of people that were trying to get the budget before this town meeting to see what those individual line items are. to see what those individual line items are. And I'm not talking about just the, the budget that's printed in the warrant, the actual cost and expenses as the Excel file. And I don't think that was available until just a few days before town meeting. Maybe I'm wrong, but it was finally sent to me about three days before town meeting. So if you're talking about saying, you know, you want to cut the police budget by 1% or 2%, you really have to, as I think it was Andrew was saying, you have to know what you're looking to cut within that budget. But if you don't have the actual budget for those departments, it's hard to do that ahead of time. Just my comment.
Thank you. Is Tim over? Tim?
Yeah, Tim Fling, 18 Main. I have two things. On the clicker front, I was wondering, I don't know if it's logistically possible to build confidence in them, if you could click on it when you walk in, when you check in, up to a certain cutoff within the meeting time, and see on the screen your clicker represent on the screen, that would build public confidence in that it actually does click, and when you do it, it goes somewhere. So I don't know if it's logistically possible, but it would be interesting if it could be solved up to a certain point in the meeting. And the second thing that I have is if there's a way to do a time limit per question, and then the hall has to extend that time, so say for like a bigger thing that needs more debate, the hall would vote to extend, say you have a cutoff of 30 minutes. Some of these articles would, would have an automatic cutoff, and people that are waiting to make a motion to move the question don't have to wait 10 people deep to be able to get that opportunity. So if, if that is something we could look into, I think that that would help also expedite these meetings, just to kind of have a natural point where if the hall has an opinion, a simple majority, two-thirds majority, whatever we decide that would be, we'd be able to automatically instill that move the question or extend the time perspective. Because I believe it's two-thirds majority to be able to move the question anyway. So if two-thirds of the halls said, "Let's vote," then we already have that point.
It's a good suggestion, but that is the moderator's call, so that would be a good conversation to have with the moderator. But thank you. Okay, we're almost done. Last one is to discuss, you probably wonder, why are we discussing Heritage Day 2027? Vanessa, go ahead.
So the Tricentennial Committee has been talking about this over the course of their recent meetings, that Heritage Day in 2027 falls on Yom Kippur, which starts at sundown the evening before. And this board historically has veered away from public meetings and large events on those Jewish holidays. So they would like the select board to weigh in on, would you agree of, do you think moving Heritage Day to the Sunday afternoon before would be amenable? Or do you have other thoughts? We've talked with recreation. We've talked with veterans. The issue with the rec folks brought up was, you know, you may lose some of your vendors from Heritage Day if you're shifting to Sunday versus Monday. You know, there may be folks that we want to be part of a larger parade that, you know, may already be committed to other, you know, fall festivals. But there would be plenty of notice if, if the board were willing to make a decision sooner rather than later.
When does the holiday begin? Sundown on Sunday?
Sundown on Sunday evening. And the clocks are turned in early November that week. So it looks like sunset wouldn't be until after, you know, 5:30 or so. Well, we wouldn't want to start until after Sunday morning church services.
So she was thinking maybe start the parade at noon and then start the Heritage Day at, you know, 1:30 or so and give the vendors three hours like they normally have? And Andrew, is our tricentennial up?
So this, this, I would have much more concern if we were talking about moving a weekend, but if this is just basically moving at less than 24 hours, I think that's a reasonable compromise. Do we know if St. Mark's has to be okay with it, right? Because the main vendors and everything are on their field, so that's something important. I don't know if they, they would not, I know their football field is a little bit uphill from there, but it would be better if there wasn't a conflict between a St. Mark's football game and Heritage Day.
Right. And we haven't approached St. Mark's yet. We wanted to get some feedback from this board first.
So I, I think on balance, that's, that's, that's something that I would support.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's, 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 you know, the holiest day of the Jewish calendar, so...
I think my, my sense of it is that it would be, you rush out of church, you do Heritage Day, and then Yom Kippur starts. It's sort of like, it's scheduled in there, but I think Yom Kippur is supposed to require some thought beforehand. It's a holy day. It's not just, okay, it starts at this time. It's kind of the workup to it. And it's the same thing with church. You don't want to rush out of church, do Heritage Day like sandwiched in there. I don't know. It seems to me that...
So what would be your alternative suggestion?
I don't know.
That's the problem.
But it just seems like squishing it in, you know, 3 o'clock Heritage Day, 5 o'clock Yom Kippur. It's like, it's too much...
This is a big, this is not the normal parade. This is going to be a very nice, long parade.
It might be a school holiday, too.
It is. It is, yes.
So moving it to another weekend again doesn't give you much flexibility.
You turn into other conflicts.
Yeah, not a great solution.
I'll be, I'll be quiet.
I don't, I don't see a better solution than Sunday. And yes, that is inconvenient in a variety of ways, but...
Andrew, have a seat.
We, we have a better idea coming.
Okay, here we go.
Andrew Faff, 50, Oak Hill Road. What about Labor Day? I think the schools are usually back at that point in time, and I know some people go away, but the weather would be a little bit warmer. You know, some, the last couple Heritage Days have been freezing cold, but having it a month earlier, maybe you have better weather.
We did look into, Travis and I were talking about that today, and there's, Marlboro still does a fairly large Labor Day parade, but that's something I'm happy to bring back to the committee, to the Tricentennial Committee.
Ours would be twice as good.
Interesting, yeah.
I mean, school's back in session at that point, barely, the Wednesday before, right, public school? But a lot of people still go away for that weekend, for Labor Day, so I don't know what the best answer is here. But I, I, what Marguerite said is true. Let's see. So, Andrew, I don't know what time your church gets out, but mine gets out at like 11:45, I believe, is the second. I don't go, I go the first one. I think it's 11:45. So, yeah, it'd be rushed.
But on Labor Day, again, that is not perfect. On the other hand, that is far more relaxed in terms of other conflicts there.
So maybe talk about them both?
Sure. Yeah, we'll bring that back there.
Maybe a whole weekend, every one go away.
That's right.
We'll continue to look at alternatives and bring them back to you.
All right, but thank you. I'm glad you guys realized this before. Too much time. Okay. All right, so I think that's it. Any public comment, anybody's hands raised? Go ahead, Kevin, when you get over.
Hi, Select Board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Kevin Miller, 18 Ladisquama. A final word, if I may, about the clicker situation. A quick search shows that there are some 70 communities in Massachusetts right now that employ clickers to record votes at town meeting. The clickers in South Bar were approved two-plus years ago. The first time they were used, they failed. The company wasn't on site. The most recent occasion, on April 8th, the company was present. So now they've got a month, having observed the failure and observed the conditions on site and the manner in which the clickers are used, to remedy the problem. I, I just heard the select board, I think, pretty much unanimously endorse the fact that the clickers can work, should work, and must work. And so I, I would encourage you, this is not casting any, any blame within town, but it is encouraging you to read the riot act to the vendor, because they've got a month to fix the problem. If you get the turnout that we're anticipating for this special town meeting of upwards of, you know, a couple thousand people, and we're counting with individual tellers, you know, Mr. Lit had his anecdote about the clickers. I've got my own about the way tellers sometimes function, counting in unison. I think you're courting some serious controversy. You know, we had the vote on the St. Mark's bell tower that was done in a hot summer day by one vote. So I, I would just encourage you to hold the vendors' feet to the fire, because there's absolutely no reason why these clickers can't work, shouldn't work, and why they, they, it's simply unacceptable to think that we're going to go into the, one of the most consequential votes this town has ever faced, having to rely on tellers when we have a technology in place that we paid for and approved two years ago. Thank you for your time.
Kevin, one thing on that. I think there is also a paper ballot prepared for that, for the special.
No, 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 no. Don't, don't get out this.
Okay.
That would only be if someone made a motion to have a secret ballot. And that may happen, but that hasn't happened yet. To begin with? Forever?
No, just on the 27th. On 2027, why don't we move Heritage Day to Columbus Day?
We always have done it on Columbus Day.
Oh, I, I'm looking at the wrong calendar. Never mind. Forget it.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. All right, I think we're done. No public comment, right? Okay.
Correct.
Sam?
Second.
Roll call vote. Marguerite?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Al? Andrew?
Aye.
Cook is aye, 5-0. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.